Twenty twenty-two, nine AM. We are starting, if I can call the meeting to order. Can I get Supervisor Dirks to do the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yep. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if I can get an acknowledgement certificate of posting.
Some of.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. Now, before we do presentations and recognitions, I'd like to acknowledge Supervisor Cosmicke. He wanted to say a few words about two members of our community.
Yeah, I would kindly request a moment of silence today. The passing of John Barrett, the longtime owner of McKinnon Lumber, and Josh Jensen, the founder and longtime owner of Calera Winery. Both were dedicated members of the community in their own respects. John Barrett, I know, was very involved with the rodeo, for instance, and just very involved and a beloved person, as was Josh Jensen, who just had a lot of connections in the community and was an innovative entrepreneur in the wine industry. So I was hoping for a moment of silence for those two.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So, CAO Espinoza, I don't know if there's any presentation recognitions today.
There are none, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So now on to board announcements. Who would like to go first?
I'll go. So I had, and I know we're gonna, my understanding, we're gonna do announcements with committee assignments now?
Yeah, I'll have a little bit of a message to share about that, but yes, you can start.
Okay, great. So Intergovernmental Committee, there was unanimous support for a flavored tobacco ban in the county, and that's coming back to the board. The Landfill Ad Hoc Committee, there was discussions on, ongoing talks on the operating agreement. I attended the Memorial Day Ceremony in Hollister with my family. Thank you to all the veterans, and thank you to everybody in attendance supporting our veterans, and of course, we were there to honor those who gave their lives for our country. I attended the potluck for the senior center efforts in San Juan Batista. There's an ongoing effort to create a senior center in San Juan. We had a nice potluck there. I attended the ribbon cutting for the, at the Anzar High School, for the San Juan Batista Rotary Club's efforts, their successful effort to obtain $200,000 in funding to upgrade the broadband Wi-Fi equipment in the Aroma San Juan School District. And I used my $3,000 allocation that we are discretionary allocation here as a supervisor to contribute toward the $40,000, which was then used to leverage to get the 200. And then also, just, I would like to, just generally, just thank all the candidates who ran in the recent primary election. It's certainly a sacrifice to run and put themselves out there. So thank you to everybody for running, and best wishes to those advancing to November, and congratulations to those who won outright. Thank you.
Supervisor Dirks?
Yeah, I too thought perhaps it was both, so I'll touch on a couple things. One, I want to say congratulations to the Behavioral Health Department with the fentanyl event. That was on Saturday. I was able to be there for the duration of the event from eleven to two at the last count that I had seen, which was around one o'clock. So it could be more, there were thirty people who had been trained in Narcan at that time, which is great, because now there's even more people in our community who can help, potentially help out those who've faced a potential overdose. So, and there were two mothers from Gilray in the last two years who've each lost a child to fentanyl, and so their stories were really moving, and it was very important to hear that. So again, thank you to Behavioral Health for spearheading that and bringing together all the different community organizations that were there as well. There was a whole list of them, and I just appreciate everyone coming together to start moving in the direction of fighting, fighting this epidemic that this county is facing. So far, in the last two years, and we're only in the middle of 2022, but there have been fifty overdoses in the county. So, so it is, it is definitely something that is facing our youth and is an issue that we're obviously beginning to address. I went to a fire protection committee with Supervisor Tiffany. We started a conversation. We're looking at a study about becoming a fire district. So there will be more to come on that. We have an upcoming meeting as well later this week on Thursday to further talk about it. I just want to say thank you to everyone who participated in the Memorial Day celebrations since the last time we were here. I was able to place some flags on some of the, at Calvary Cemetery, on the veterans' graves, along with a lot of other people. And it was really encouraging to see students out there and young people participating in the process, along with a huge contingency from Target and their volunteer efforts as well. So, so that was really nice to see as well. And I went to a business council meeting, too, which was really great and interesting to hear some of the different things that are happening in our business community. I went to Saver San Benito. It was the very first one out at Swing Farms in my district, District One. There were a lot of local businesses there, and I think it's really important for people to continue to celebrate our county and the different things that we offer. I encourage everyone to go to the next one on July fifth. It's going to be the first Sunday of every month. I went to a housing advisory committee last week with Supervisor Gonzalez, where we continued to talk about the in-lu fees and look at the affordable housing ordinance. We had board leadership training last week, so if you weren't able to hear or see that, I highly encourage you to watch that, if that's interesting to you. And lastly, but very importantly, today is Flag Day. And so I think it was very attributable for us to say the Pledge of Allegiance like we do before every meeting, but today is Flag Day. And so if you see more flags than usual, that could be why. Thank you.
Supervisor Tiffany?
Thank you, Chair. Just quickly, a lot of, some of the same things. I also attended the Memorial Day Services, and it was a very nice event. Also would like to congratulate those that ran and were, and in particular, successful in the recent election, particularly to Mindy Satello and Angela Kuro, who both look to be appearing to be on this, on this board starting next year. And also to Supervisor Dirks for getting in a runoff. I know she loves elections, so this will be another opportunity for her. Good luck and congratulations, Betsy. Also, ad hocs and committees, some of these the same. Supervisor Gonzalez and I worked together, attended another ARPA meeting, which is American Rescue Money, and we're still looking at additional ways to spend the money that we have. As already mentioned, attended a meeting, fire protection meeting with Supervisor Dirks that, you know, looks like it's the start of trying to put together potentially a JPA or a district that we will all work together with the cities Hollister and City of San Juan Batista on fire protection going forward, as we currently are doing. Also attended Economic Development Committee meeting with Supervisor Hernandez, and there's a lot going on in that area, Intergovernmental with Supervisor Cosmicke. So as we all are very busy people. Also, continue to work with, with help of interim RMA Director Steve Loop. We met with people from Stonegate, as well as Trespinos, Sunny Slope Water, in terms of trying to address Stonegate and Trespinos water situation, and looking for a long-term solution in, for both of them. And I'm hopeful that we're gonna be making some progress there in the coming months. That's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Gonzalez?
I don't have anything further to add. Thank you.
Well, I just wanted to share a few words, and if you could just be patient with me. But I, I just wanted to first start by thanking the board for this moment in time. I really want to capture a sense of unity. I know that that was the sentiment, and it's funny, we just had that special meeting with that intent in mind on collaborating, on working together, on setting good precedent with direction. So I believe it's a unique moment in time to consider that you, for the sake of unity, would support an individual with strong convictions, yet knowing that is someone you can rely on. I meant what I said, then my predictability becomes a wall that you can lean on when the struggles get harder. My desire is to honor that intent by respecting your seat at the table, by refocusing the dialogue of this legislative body with an intent to maximize time and efficiencies, by renewing hope in our collective body of employees, department heads, and administrative staff. My hope is in these last five to six months, we can have at least one thing to celebrate at the end of the year. The end outcome of that unity will be many little victories along the way. I know that unity will not come without adversity. But adversity has its way of changing people. Either it makes us combative and unwilling to work together, or it restores us to humility and gives us a sense of discipline to allow change to happen, but not for the sake of it, but for the sake of progress. My request to this board is, please not allow adversity to break this board, but mold us. May it mold us to a greater focus on truth. With truth as our guide, in change we will persevere. But this change will require us to keep a greater focus on first things first. That will, that will be to take goals, that will take goals in this chairmanship, the delegation and legislative intent of this body to expect results that benefit our county and its residents. Therefore, we will have goals. So I wanted to highlight some of these things. And it's not exhaustive, but they're goals based off of consistency. So my desire with the will of this board is to have a process consistent, predictable, and efficient. Therefore, my wish is to follow board rules and procedures that we, the Board of Supervisors, approved on March twenty-second, 2022. And you have a copy of each on your desk. Which means, while it's my desire as a chair to respect every board member's voice, the desire for every board member to speak their piece on an item, as a chair, my ultimate goal will be to seek out the will of the board. Not, so no more round robbins. If there is something important to say or ask, please make your request known to me. I think it's important to acknowledge the importance of giving yourself permission to not have to speak on every item. Obviously, if it's important, I encourage it. You will realize yourself more deliberative in this silence. I will be adding committee reports, future agenda items, to the beginning of the meeting in the board member reports. I know we do have future agenda items currently on this meeting, but going forward, I have asked the CAO to just add a clear definition on the agenda item to ensure public understanding and increase engagement, as most attendees are here at the beginning, like Supervisor Cosmicke had mentioned, and not the end. So as a reminder, and according to our board rules and procedures, there's a five-minute expectation for board members to speak with obvious discretion. The main point is I will be asking for a board member to wrap it up if there is considerable redundancies or comments that are off-topic. While I am not seeking a hard and fast rule, I hope you understand that it's my job to keep you focused on the item. I will also honor my word that there will be no committee assignment changes. And I just want to finish with thanking you, the board, with entrusting me in this chairmanship. I appreciate your trusting me to move this board forward in a unified way. I also consider the chair position, and I think this is important for future board members and future chairs, is, the chair position is the most neutral position, I believe, on this board. It requires an intent to garner understanding, deliberation, and focus on the will of the board. It centers its attention on exercising prudence, focused on giving clear direction first to our CAO, and therefore, department heads and staff. It is a position considerate of the sentiment integrity, respect, and representation this board places on the county in its service of exercising the legislative policy to serve the interests of our community. I consider an honor, one that I do not take lightly. So I humbly thank you again. With that said, my board announcements is, although I had every intent to go to the fentanyl event, I was bummed that I wasn't able to. There was conflicting interest, but I do support the fentanyl awareness. I believe it very important. Our community is being bombarded with fentanyl. I think we need to be proactive. And then the Memorial Day Services were amazing, as always, and I love honoring our soldiers that have fallen. And then lastly, yeah, we have a fire protection meeting coming up. I actually am sitting in, just kind of temporarily, because I believe one board member isn't able to attend. So with that said, I know we have department head announcements?
Yeah, there are no announcements.
Okay. So can I get public comment? So this public comment is on anything not on the agenda? Opportunity to address the board on items of interest not appearing on the agenda, no action may be taken. Madam Clerk?
In chambers, please provide a speaker card. Via Zoom, please press star nine or the raise your hand icon. First up, Elisa Martinez.
Good morning. Okay. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Elisa Martinez. I am a volunteer with Heading Home Animal Rescue. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and we specialize in doing rescue and TNR, which stands for Trap, Neuter, and Return, or Rehome, of feral cats and kittens, stray and abandoned cats, cats in need in the community. Over the past several years, we have facilitated the spay and neuter and rehoming of literally thousands of kittens and cats in San Benito County. And our executive director, Melissa Finley, was hoping to be here today, but she's very ill. So I just wanted to, you know, speak about the work we do. And as you might know, I'm here to speak about the spay and neuter clinics for feral cats, the SNP clinics. And we've been talking with Melanie Scher, who is the executive director of SNP. And she did make us aware that the board, that the county is going to agree to sponsor, allocate funding for six feral cat spay and neuter clinics. And so I'm just here to thank you for hearing our concerns, for listening to the concerns of the community, and acknowledging that this really is a need. So thank you so much for hearing us, and I just wanted to express my appreciation on behalf of the members of our rescue community. And we're really hoping that this allocation of funds will be ongoing, at least until we really can get on top of this problem, because when it comes to the breeding of animals, it happens exponentially. So we could have a domestic cat that gets out of the house, that's not fixed, and a feral cat, and they breed, and in a few years, you will have a hundred cats. And we've recently been helping some elderly members of the community in the county who have been overrun with feral cats. And there are many wonderful rescuers here who are trying to help in that effort. But it takes money. We need to spay and neuter these cats, and then we also need spay and neuter for domestic pets as well. So what we're also hoping to is, when we facilitate a spay and neuter clinics, we like to do it in the winter months as a preventative, before all the cats start breeding in the spring and summer months. So it's smart if we can do a lot of the clinics during the winter, just to prevent all that from happening. Otherwise, if we do it only in the summer, in the warm months, then we're overloaded with kittens. So thank you so much for this allocation of funding.
Natalie Day?
Good morning. Congratulations, Mr. Chair Hernandez. You know who I am. My name is Natalie Day, and I also want to thank you for the six clinics that we'll be able to, to have. And hopefully, we'll be able to do them in the, in the most. And hopefully, we'll be able to do them in the most effective way that we could do, you know, as many cats as possible during the months where they're not in heat and breeding. I also would like to see this as an line item on the budget. And I've been coming since February. I know you guys are probably really sick of seeing me up here asking for the same thing. And I'm super grateful that I don't have to today. I am going to ask that, it is an ongoing funding for this, and the need is great. And the pandemic set us back. We'd be a lot more ahead of this if we hadn't had to stand down. In fact, Melanie was the only thing going during the pandemic. She was the one that came up with all the protocols and everything, so that those kinds of services could still take place. I'm also, there was a question of who we work for. I volunteer for several different organizations, but I haven't had a paying job since 2017. So I don't work for anybody. I work for the cats. There's no financial compensation I get. I don't get, you know, money for any of it. I spend thousands of dollars of my own money every year. So if anyone is in question of who I work for, I work for the cats. Thank you.
Mary Elena Trigo?
Buenos dias, señores supervisors. Estamos de nuevo ante ustedes para pedirles. Soy proveedora de cuidado en casa de aquí del Condado San Benito. Para volverles a pedir.
Hello. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Can y'all hear me well, like this? Okay. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. We are here once again as IHSS providers.
Vengo a pedirles de nuevo a seguridad médica. Vengo representando a todos los que cuidamos en casa. Nos estás haciendo, no tenemos ninguna seguridad, ningún servicio médico. Ustedes saben cómo está ahorita la vida tan cara. Y no tenemos nada que nos esté respaldando. Tenemos muchos años pidiéndoselas y no nos han hecho caso. Venimos junta tras junta y les venimos pidiendo lo mismo. Por favor, háganos caso a todos. Somos unos servidores para tanto sus familias como para todas las personas que nos necesitan. Y no tenemos ninguna protección médica.
We are IHSS, I'm here representing other IHSS home care providers today. And we have been fighting for health insurance for years now. And it's something that still hasn't been offered to us. With the cost of everything being so high, it is very difficult to afford things right now. And to not have health insurance is just also another burden. And...
Nosotros sabemos que nos quieren aumentar el salario, pero con eso no contribuimos para nuestra seguridad médica. Puesto que toda la vida está tan cara, y no, no tenemos nada. Por favor, háganos caso. Muchísimas gracias.
Again, we are here asking for health insurance. We understand that you all believe that giving us a raise is enough, but that does not cover, for many people, the cost of health insurance. And so that's why we are here today. Thank you so much for your time.
Maribel Jaime?
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Maribel Jaime. Yo también trabajo para el programa de IHSS.
Hi, my name is Maribel Jaime. I also work for the IHSS program.
Tengo cinco años trabajando para el programa por mi hijo.
I have five years working in this program, taking care of my son.
Empecé a trabajar para otra persona part-time.
I started working for another person part-time.
Subió mi ingreso mil dólares al mes.
That raised my wages by about $1,000 a month.
Me quitaron el medical por el ingreso que aumenté.
And they took away my medical because of that raise in my wages.
Me mandaron a Obamacare.
They sent me to Obamacare.
Me empecé a pagar una seguridad de 400 dólares por mi esposo y yo.
I started paying insurance of $400 for my husband and myself.
Así estuvimos pagando cuatro años.
That's how we were paying for about four years.
Hasta que empezó la pandemia y mi esposo me dijo que ya no.
Until the pandemic started and then my husband told me, no more.
Tuvimos que recurrir al medical y me lo dieron otra vez.
We had to return to medical and they gave it to me again.
Entonces, pues esa es la situación que vivimos ahorita. Por eso estamos aquí para que nos ayuden.
So that's the situation that we live in right now, and that's why we're here, asking for your support.
Por favor, ayúdenos. Gracias.
Please help us. Thank you.
Byron Lopez?
Hi, my name is Byron Lopez. Thank you, Board, for having me here. I am a senior policy analyst with SEIU Local 2015, representing the IHSS providers in San Benito County. So I have some information here, some information facts we can send this out to the board. But basically, it's stuff that was not shown to you by the lawyer that you got in the last presentation. So I saw that. So I just wanted to kind of add some more information. So one of the things that wasn't included on there was the senior population in San Benito County. There's about 8,735. We know more people are going to be retiring, getting to 65 and have more needs. And that's about 13% of the population right now, so we'll see how much of that increases. And in the county, there's about 4,734 people with at least one disability and under the age of 65. And that's about 7% of the county. So these are basically the people that IHSS providers, our members, take care of. And the need is only going to get greater. And then if you look in the county, there's actually two nursing homes, and they're actually part of like hospitals, so they're not like freestanding. And combined, they have 119 beds. So when you look at the population, even served within IHSS, and then the potential population, there's just not going to be enough to cover people. And just if we look at the cost of care, so Genworth Financial is a big insurance company. They said the cost for home care is about $35 an hour. And for the nearest place nearby here, which is in Salinas. And then for an annual cost for an assisted living facility is $72,000 in a year. And if you wanted a semi-private, not a fully private, semi-private room in a nursing home, that would be about $116,800. And so, you know, how do you pay for this? And one of the things that I didn't see in the presentation was what 1991 realignment was, or how much they give you specifically for social services. So just looking at that data from the California State Controller, there was about $3.3 million. And so that's something that can cover. The IHSS MOE of how the county pays for that, that was $1.8 million. So just even if you do basic math of how much realignment is, how much the cost of the MOE is, it can cover that. And even if you wanted to do a $1 increase for providers, it would cost the county about $147,000 per year, which is again, something that wasn't brought up in the presentation. And then, yeah, the last thing is that in San Benito County, the number of unfulfilled hours for IHSS is 46,412, which is about 5%.
Thank you.
Andy Shahkaran?
To the... Good morning. I want to thank Colin Cosmic for noting the passing of my friend Josh Jensen. I've been reading the articles about Josh. You know, Josh was not born in San Benito County, but he helped our wine industry be born. And he only departed to be close to his family in San Francisco. He loved this county. The articles you'll read about just how he put this county on the map in terms of his efforts with Pinot Noir, I mean, he was recognized around the world and made an incredible product. But there was a lot more to Josh than just that. You know, he was a graduate of Yale. He did his master's at Oxford in cultural, social anthropology. And frankly, he was just one of the most bold thinkers who didn't just sit there and go along with the crowd that you might think he'd be with, even though he went to places like Bohemian Grove and hung out with very powerful people. He was an avid supporter of Bernie Sanders and maxed out in terms of how much money he could give to Bernie Sanders when he ran for president. And here in this county, when we dealt with the issue of fracking, I urge people to go and look on, look up Josh Jensen and fracking and watch the videos that he created to support our efforts to ban fracking in this county, because he understood that water was the most essential resource in our county. And that he was unafraid. I watched him at a Chamber of Commerce meeting as he pointed out that people wanted to pump neurotoxins into our water supply in order to get oil. And people gasped, "How could you possibly say this at this gathering?" But he was not afraid to say it. I just think we had a giant who lived in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
On Zoom, if you'd like to make a comment, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. You've been unmuted. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Susan Hilden. And good morning to all the board members. Peter, congratulations on being the chair. I would like to update you on our last feral clinic, which was held on June 2. A huge thanks goes to Tracy and Stacy of USA Sports for offering their facility. They kindly opened a private room for use in recovering the ferals, a restroom for the vet staff and volunteers. And with kind and helpful employees, it stayed late and helped us take our pop-ups down and it put equipment away. It was just a wonderful community service on their part, and we really thank them. There were 13 locations trapped for that clinic, nine in the county, four in the city. 39 cats were fixed, 16 males, 23 females, and 25 aborted fetuses. Also, I was notified on Sunday that the county has signed a contract with SNIP US for six clinics starting in January through June of 2023. Along with the city funds, this is going to allow SNIP to continue providing feral services for one month, each month, until June of 2023. From the bottom of my heart to all of you, thank you. This dedicated group of volunteers will not let this community down. We will fill these clinics, will continue the mission of T N R. Our hope will be that between the city and the Board of Supervisors of the county, that you will see the results of this and that you will continue funding for us. Again, thank you. The next feral clinic is on July 12. Will be held at Pet Friends. I encourage any of you to come out and see what is done. It's simply amazing. While I was waiting to come online, I also got a text from Diana Price, who was supposed to be there today. She's one of our trappers. And unfortunately, she can't be there today. But the reality of it is, she has a trapped nursing female from the city that she had to take out of the county this morning to get services of a vet, because she couldn't get one here. The mother has to be put back today because she is nursing. We know that she has kittens somewhere. So that's a reality, and she couldn't be here. And I just wanted to thank you for your time. Have a nice day.
Uwa Lugo?
Good morning, Board. My name is Uwa Lugo. I'm with SEIU 2015. And we represent over 600 healthcare workers who are without health insurance. We have these providers who are at the bargaining table with San Benito PA, requesting that the Board of Supervisor do make a decision, providing them with health insurance. It is important that the Board of Supervisor listen to their constituents, who are crying out and voicing out about how important it is for them to have this simple human right of health insurance. And also, as we requested to be put on the agenda, we have been denied that. And so we had to be a little creative and just share a little bit of our presentation here in the public comment section. But we do request that the board please to help us provide this information to you guys on an agenda item. If we can be put on the agenda for the next Board of Supervisor meeting on June 28, it would be really appreciative. And like Mr. Supervisor Hernandez had mentioned, right, that it is important for us to be, for you guys to provide the resources that your community deserves. And also for you guys to make a decision on how important it is for our healthcare workers to receive healthcare benefits. Thank you.
Valerie Egland?
Thank you. And I have to say, I really appreciate San Benito County Board of Supervisors more every day. Having gone to a couple of other meetings recently in our county, it's very refreshing, and I appreciate all of you. The reason I rushed here, there are massive delays on 156 coming into Hollister. So, and I don't think that I saw an adequate enough posting. Anyway, anyway, I was really surprised trying to get here. Took me half an hour more. Anyway, Reach San Benito Parks Foundation monitors the Ambag Regional Clearinghouse. And every month, there are notices about E I Rs that are completed on projects. And one in particular, we monitor basically to check out the possibilities for bicycling and for parks where we need to have interest. And so the clearinghouse posted that the Highway 25 and 101 intersection has completed the IRA, E I R, and will be moving forward. But what is extremely important is the bicycle pedestrian connectivity that is going to be provided over the freeway and into San Benito County, basically. And so I put together a hybrid map of our San Benito County bicycle plan and that of Santa Clara County. And so if I may leave them...
You can leave them with the clerk, Valerie.
It shows how the Bay Ridge Trail, as well as all of the street connections from Gilroy, Morgan Hill, Gaveland College, will be funneled down through to 25. And so what I'm asking is that as the roads are worked on, as you make decisions about San Benito County and what we're doing with bicycle pedestrian issues, that you consider how connective we can be, not just for health and recreation, but for climate change, which Caltrans is very concerned about getting people off the road and onto bicycles, as well as the tourism. Massive amount of bicycle tourism that could be coming down from the Bay Area into San Benito County and enjoying our county facilities. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
On Zoom, you've been unmuted. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Mary Shaw Coron. I normally speak about environmental issues in this county, but I was really moved by the presentation of the SEIU in-home support healthcare workers who are demanding healthcare. I really think that this is economic injustice. As an individual whose mother was taken care of by in-home support healthcare workers for many years before she passed, I really sympathize with their plight. These are people who are some of the hardest workers, public workers, in our community. And yet, they themselves do not have adequate pay, a lot of times, as well as healthcare. and yet they themselves do not have adequate pay a lot of times, as well as healthcare. And that is a human right. I really sympathize with them because you yourselves, as supervisors, have given yourselves healthcare. And what, you're paid way more than these individuals who do, I think, much harder work, with all due respect, but I have seen healthcare workers, they put their own health on the line a lot of times and do very difficult work of having to lift people who are oldest and most vulnerable. Anyway, I really hope, I know that we have economic challenges, but I, I think it is not fair to have hardworking people in our community, the hardest workers, some of them, with no healthcare for themselves. Thank you very much.
No other comments.
Okay. Bringing it back to the Board, so we're on to the regular agenda. So item number one is well deserved. It's thanking Supervisor Gonzalez, or the then Chair Gonzalez, for her time served. She served from June 2021 to June 2022 dutyfully. She did her best. She did a really good job. I know that a lot of us appreciated the time that she served, and I know she's, she's very passionate, as we all are, and did her best to manage conversations. So I just want to thank you Supervisor Gonzalez for your time serving as the Chair of the Board.
Thank you. I appreciate this.
Did you have any, did you want to share any comments, Madam Chair?
Well, we all know it's been a very difficult year, and I appreciate the Board in electing me and having the confidence in me. I look forward to the next six months of, of the year to make sure that we are productive. As you said, both you and Supervisor Tiffany will, won't be on the Board, and so I'm hoping the remaining, the remainder of the year, that we do everything possible to make sure we can be as productive and have some checks in the win columns. Yes. Collective wins. Yes. Yes. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
So on to...
Mr. Chair, if I may, normally typically I...
Public comment.
Public comment. Thanks.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, you can press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon. No comments.
Sorry, I just did things a little backwards. So on to item two.
May...
Oh, you wanted to...
Yeah.
Yes, go ahead.
I had my card in, was for public comment, but previously, we cannot let the moment pass without someone from public comment say how grateful we have been to have Bea Gonzalez as Chair this last passing year. She's done a great job, and it has been exemplary, the kind of cooperation that you as a Board have put together personally to back her up and to make this transition that is a little extraordinary, however appropriate. And so I just want to say that our Parks Foundation is definitely appreciative of all what she has done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So item two is receive a presentation from the Water District on water operations, current conditions of drought, current drought conditions. And then we will be asking for staff direction.
So I want to invite Jeff Catana, and I believe we have Sean Novak available as well from the Water District, so we appreciate them being here. I do know that there were two Board members, I think Supervisor Betsy Dirks and Supervisor Bob Tiffany have met with the Water District and staff, and there have been, you know, an increasing concern over the drought, and I know that was spearheaded by the Board members. So anyways, I don't know if they wanted to say a couple of comments prior, or we'll just pass it on to Jeff.
Well, yeah, if we can have Jeff present, then we'll go to public comment.
Sure.
Then the Board can speak.
All right. Good morning. So like Ray said, I came this morning to kind of give you an update on the, on the drought situation and where we are, kind of where our water supply is, what we're going to be doing in the future. And then Sean's going to give you some update on, on the conservation measures that we're working on. So the agenda today that I wanted to go over with you is kind of what, what kind of 2022 at a glance, where we are today and what, and how we got here, kind of the geographic area that we're working with in, in the county. So it's the area that we're studying and the one that we manage actively is not the entire county, but it's the basin that we, that we manage that's in our Sigma Plan, the basin conditions that, that we're currently working under and where we're, you know, and what the situation is. The future demand projections, I think that's, this is an important part of it because not only where we are today, but what's, what's going to be happening in the future and what the demand is going to be looking like in the future and how we're going to be managing that. And then what our future water supply projects are to help meet that demand as moving into the future. Because, you know, as we are sitting here today, there won't be sufficient water moving into the future if we don't have some of these projects going forward. And then Sean's going to give you the work on his conservation efforts. So 2022 at a glance, we have continued dry conditions, as we've had the last two years prior to this. This dry rainfall, groundwater level has declined, and our CVP allocation has been dismal. You know, back in 2020 to 2021, our agricultural allocation was only 15% of our contract amount, and our MNI portion of the water that we, water that we use to deliver to the City of Hollister was only 65% of our contract amount. That 65% at that level is sufficient to meet the demand currently today, but moving into the future, a 65% is not sufficient. And then moving forward from last year, our agricultural allocation was 0%, and our MNI portion was, was 25%. To give you an idea, the MNI portion of our contract, 25%, is just about 2,000 acre feet. The demand that we have to meet the water quality goals that we've had set in the Hollister Urban Area Water and Wastewater Master Plan require that we have about 5,000 acre feet each year currently going into the system to help blend with the groundwater so that we can meet our water quality goals. And today, where we are, we have a 0% allocation for agriculture and 0% for, for MNI. So that, where that leaves us is in a, in a pretty difficult position. The Water District is still able to deliver the amount of water, the minimum amount, amount of water to the water treatment plants that we need to, to keep at least a 50% blend. So we've got water stored that we had in, in San Houston. I had water stored in other areas that I've brought back. So we've actually got enough water sitting in San Houston to continue on, even with the 0% allocation for a couple of more years at making, at a 50% blend with, with surface water. So that's, you know, that's the good news, but the bad news is we're using up our, our water supply bank account right now. The water, groundwater quality here, when we have to, we have to fall back on it, the groundwater quality is pretty poor, but at least it's, it's there to help, you know, manage the, the shortfalls. But with that groundwater quality, if we deliver that exclusively to the City of Hollister and Sunny Slope, they won't, the City of Hollister and Sunny Slope can't meet their waste discharge requirements for their wastewater plants, so they'll be in violation of their waste discharge orders. So that's why it's critical to help keep this water coming into the county. Looking at the groundwater storage, again, when we have a shortage in the MNI and agricultural water from the, from the CVP, what we have to do is we have to fall back on groundwater and, and use groundwater for agriculture and for MNI purposes. And in all of those management areas, and I'll show you a map of that in just a second, and all of the management areas, the groundwater levels decreased in the last three years. It's not unexpected in a drought that happens, and typically what you work for is in, in the non-drought periods, you try to replenish that water and bring as much water in through Hernandez's San Felipe water and, and replenish those groundwater, those groundwater levels. And I'll show you another chart where we can see where that has happened over time. Total water use has actually been pretty stable. So throughout the drought, our groundwater and, and surface water demand total is pretty stable. It's, it's around 40,000 acre feet a year is, is what the total demand is. In order to keep our basin balanced, we have to have about 20,000 acre feet a year of San Felipe water come in to keep the basin balanced over time, so. The groundwater levels are still above the minimum thresholds. The minimum thresholds are the levels that we set when we developed our Sigma Plan. Looking at the historic lows in the groundwater basin going back to like 1975, we looked at what those historic lows were and actually set them about 10 to 15 feet above those historic lows for our minimum thresholds. The minimum threshold is something if you start to go down towards, you're starting to go, to go down towards that minimum threshold, it triggers management actions from the district and, and our groundwater sustainability plan to help manage that. And so there's, there are specific actions that we would take if, if that were to happen. The geographic area again that I wanted to show you, if you, if you look at the, the map up there, it's fairly extensive. It runs all the way from Pisinas Valley up to, up to Casa de Fruta and past up, up that way, and all the way out to, through San Juan Valley towards the Chittingin Gap and, and out towards 129. So it's a pretty extensive area. The Water District, what we did is we combined five smaller basins into one larger basin, and then, and went to DWR and got that reassigned, so it's now called the North San Benito Basin, if you look at our, at our groundwater sustainability plan. This map here is a, a map that's, this kind of shows you all of those dots that you see on the map. It's really difficult for you to see there from, from this perspective, but what I wanted to be able to present to you is each one of those graphs that are on there represents a monitoring well that the Water District actively monitors for groundwater quality and groundwater levels. We have about 100 of those throughout the basin that we actively monitor, but there are key wells that we, that we monitor that, that are used in the groundwater sustainability plan. And this, for the Hollister management area, that group right there, what we call the key wells that we, that we look at, and, and that's where we measure where the minimum thresholds are. And if we see a well that's going down towards the minimum threshold, then again, we want to take some action. One of the other things I wanted to point out to you here is that, and again, it's difficult for you to see on this, is that the, on the bottom of those graphs, it goes from 1970 to 2020. So if you look at the, the majority of those, you can see that over time, from 1970 moving forward, those dots have actually gone up, which means the groundwater level is rising. This is, this is a better map to show you, and it's a little bit easier to see. Goes back to 1975. You can see how in 1975, that was the baseline, that we've got the zero there. On the left-hand side, that represents number of acre feet in storage. So over time, with the San Felipe project brought in, you can see that we've gained about 350,000 acre feet of storage in our basin, which is significant. That's a huge amount, and that's attributed solely to the, to bringing in that San Felipe water. That's what's helped bring this basin back into balance. So it's really critical that that water supply continue, and we continue to bring that water in. Otherwise, we'd be in a situation that they are in a central valley, where you've got depleted groundwater basins and subsidence issues. So moving on to the, the future municipal water demand, the reason I focused on the municipal demand here is that the, the agricultural demand has been pretty much stable for like the last 20, 25 years. The, it's, you know, it's the, the agricultural portion of, is, of the county is pretty well-developed, and it's pretty stable. So the water demand and, and the agricultural portion of it hasn't really changed much over the last 20 years. But what is going to be changing is the municipal demand. And right now, our municipal demand as we sit here today, includes City of Hollister, Sunny Slope, and now San Juan Batista we've included in there. The municipal demand today is about 6,800 acre feet a year. Moving out to 2045, which is only 20 years from now, and that's not a long time when you look at water projects and how long water projects take to get online, is going to be 12,500. And that's, and that's assuming that there's only like a two and a half percent growth rate over time. The, the bars that you see on there, the different graphs are, are different projections using a, a lower range and an upper range of, of what the projected increase in demand is going to be. But if you can see, the, the middle bar, the orange one, is the one that we, that we're using to make our, to use our forecasting and, and our, and our project development. And that is, is like I said, up to 12,500 acre feet in the next 20 years. So how are we going to be able to meet that, given the uncertainty? And I can show you here, but one of the problems we have, again, with the San Felipe project and, and CVP waters, you can see that bar graph that you see there represents our annual allocations in acre feet over time. And the bottom there is the years, and then on the left-hand side is, is the number of acre feet. You can see that in some years, we get 40,000, up to 40,000 acre feet of water in a single year that we have available to us. The problem is, is that we don't have the facilities to be able to take advantage of the 40,000 acre feet of water when it's available. So what we're working on is, you can see here, there's, and there's about 6,000 acre feet annually that's available in 25% of the years that, that goes unused. So how do you, what do you do to take advantage of that, to make up that shortfall? Because that 6,000 acre feet is what'll get us to the 12,500 that we need in 2045. That's what, that's what's going to make up the difference. So how do you get there? So we looked at, at a suite of different projects that would be able to, to supply that demand and be able to take advantage of that. Anywhere from, from in-basin surface water storage, so expanding San Houston, new storage reservoirs, expanding Pisinas, basically local stored, local surface water storage is what we looked at. Out-of-basin storage, New Pacheco, up on that, on Pacheco Pass, and expanding Pacheco Reservoir. BF Sisk, BF Sisk is what everybody here knows as San Luis Reservoir, but the dam is actually called BF Sisk. There's a project that, that's moving forward to raise that 20 feet. And so 10 feet of that 20-foot raise would be available for the contractors on the CV, South Delta Contractors on CVP to be able to purchase and buy into that project to buy storage there. There's about 130,000 acre feet of storage that would be available from that project. So that's, that's something that we're looking at. And then just groundwater storage and, and use in the, in the county. We looked at the North Area Groundwater Bank, storing water up in, in that area and extracting it, and an ASR project, which is, which is why it's called Aqua for Storage and Recovery. So basically, you take San Felipe water when it's available, you treat it to drinking water standards, you inject it into the ground, and then in a drought like today, you would, you would reverse those wells and then bring that water back out and deliver it to the City of Hollister and Sunny Slope. So those are all projects that we're looking for, looking at. But if you look over here on the right-hand column over there, you can see this last one before the relative score, you can see what the capital cost per acre foot for each one of those projects is, and it gets pretty expensive. You're running anywhere from $54,000 an acre foot, so that's what it would cost to store one acre foot of water, down to about $10,000 for the, for the BF Sisk Dam Raise. So what we're, what we looked at is, is the cheaper, less expensive projects when you're, you know, the, the ranking over here, the relative score, the threes you see are the highest ranked projects, and those are the ones that we're going to be looking at moving forward with. So the recommended strategy, when, how are we going to implement, you know, projects like this? The initial project that we're looking at implementing would be a 10,000, or 1,000 acre foot a year average ASR project, would be phase one of, of a two-phase project for that ASR project. The next one that would be coming online would be the BF Sisk Dam Raise Project. Remember, these projects, like the BF Sisk Dam Raise Project, that's going to be like a 10-year project, eight to 10-year project before it actually comes online. So you got to try to phase these things and, and know when that project's going to come online and when you need to invest in it. It's a, it's a, the BF Sisk Dam Raising is not something that you can wait to decide if you want to participate in it. It's going to happen, and if you don't participate in the beginning, you'll miss the boat, you won't be able to do it. So it's something that you have to make a decision on soon, we will, and, and to move forward, otherwise it won't be available to us. And in the next phase, the ASR, if you move out to like 2038, another 1100 to 1200 acre feet of ASR storage space, phase two, and then finally the 1,000 acre feet of the, the North Area Groundwater Bank. So that's the, that's the proposed phasing for a project like this. So that's the, that's the proposed phasing for a project like this. So what is all that going to cost? In the 15-year CIP, getting out, you know, out the 15 years, we're looking at about $96 million in, in additional investments that we're going to have to make. It sounds like a lot of money and it is, it is a lot of money. But if you look back at the original investment for the San Felipe Project in 1987, the Water District invested, or, you know, $100 million. So that's what the San Felipe Project cost in 1987, was $100 million. We're still paying on that debt today, so it's not paid off yet. I think there's about still $65 million that we owe on that particular debt. But future projects, again, moving out past the 15 years to getting out to 2040, another 55, 56 million, for a total of about $152 million to get to 2045 with a sufficient water supply for, for everything that we're looking at doing. That's all I've got and I'll let Sean come up and if you have any questions, we can, can pick those up after he's done.
Sean's going to present right now, see the other 13 slides.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Sean Novak. I run the Water Resources Association, San Benito County, represent the City of Hollister, City of San Juan Batista, Sunny Slope County Water District, and the San Benito County Water District. As you know, we've been in drought for the last three years, but I wanted to go over, we've actually been in drought since about 2011. We had a brief little break from that and actually 2017, you all recall Lone Tree up there, the atmospheric river dumped a bunch of water and we had flooding up in that area. We got some good decent allocations from the Central Valley Project. Then we saw the drought start to come back, 2020, when the pandemic hit. And you might remember all the wildfires that season as well. The conditions continued to deteriorate in 2020, 2021. In April 2021, California declares a drought emergency for several counties and San Benito County was one of those. And the next month after that, the local water agencies enacted stage one of our water shortage contingency plan, and that was all voluntary. The goal was to get 15% reduction to pre-drought levels. We failed miserably. We got about six and a half, seven percent reduction, but I noticed that was for the whole state. So people didn't respond very well. Then in October of 2021, this last fall, drought emergency for the entire state was declared. In May of, just this last May, we decided to raise the, to stage two, our water shortage contingency plan, which is mandatory water conservation. You'll see on this map here, I don't know if you can see it here, our area is in exceptional, in extreme and severe drought. You can see our little county right here, down here, it's exceptional, you got extreme and severe. So it is bad. For those of you not familiar with our, our infrastructure for our county here, as far as the water system does, if you look at the top of the map here, you'll see Stan Louis Reservoir. There's two principal major water projects in the state. One is the State Water Project and the other is Central Valley Water Project. We hook up to the Central Valley Project, which is a federal project. It's run by the USBR, United States Bureau of Reclamation. They bring water from wetter parts of the area, mainly comes down through the delta and all those canals and stuff. They'll fill up San Luis Reservoir. That water is pumped through the pass in the Pacheco Conduit and right about Casa de Fruta, the pipeline goes in the two directions, one towards north, towards Santa Clara County, and then the other half comes down here to our county. As it goes down about Fairview right here, there's several turnouts and stuff for small parcels and, and ag parcels to hook into that water. Can also hook into one of our surface water treatment plants, which is La Salt, turns the corner down airline to Union and comes down here, San Houston Reservoir, we can fill that up with that water. Like Jeff says, we can use it to store water for our, our dry period like we're having now. And the beauty about this system is we can backflow it back up to the pass here. They're doing some kind of maintenance work up here. We can backflow the water back up this way to the pass so people have access to it. The, the pipeline actually terminates in, in San Juan Valley. And then I want to talk about some of the other infrastructure. We have Hernandez way down in South County. It's down past the Pinnacles and that captures water off of San Benito Mountain, which is our highest point in our county. All that watershed down there, when it rains, it comes into the reservoir there. We use that water to regulate the San Benito River so we can keep it wet and hopefully recharge our groundwater supplies, our aquifer. And as you can see, when you go down by the river here, whoops, I don't know what I did there, hitting too many buttons. When you go down the river here, you'll see that Sunny Slope, City of Hollister and San Juan Batista all have wells pretty close proximity to the river there to take advantage of that. And then the water will continue down San Benito River right before it gets to the Chittingin Gap here and it flows into the Paharo River. The problem with that Chittingin Gap is kind of a lip that sticks up and the only way water gets over that lip and reaches into the Paharo is we have a big storm surge, which doesn't happen that often. So essentially our basin is a closed basin. We don't get a chance to really flush out the mineral content. The positive side of that is most of the water that we use in the county stays in the county, but again, the quality isn't that great. Our last third piece of our water supply is the recycled water project at the Reclamation Plant at the City of Hollister. There is a pipeline that goes from the plant here after that water's treated at a very high standard. It's chlorinated, clean and all that good stuff. And there's a pipeline that goes out towards the airport here and there's several turnouts there for the farms to hook into that water as well. So during dry times, we focus, get water from our groundwater basin and as Jeff mentioned, it has a large storage capacity. I use this slide here to just kind of give you that idea. Our above-down-ground reservoirs only add up to about 40,000 acre feet of water, where our groundwater basin holds 500,000 acre feet, which I put San Luis Reservoir on there just to give you some comparison. We have about a quarter of the capacity of San Luis Reservoir right here in our groundwater basin, which is really a blessing for us all, even though the water quality isn't that great. But due to the extreme conditions, mainly not getting our, our imported surface water, lack of rain and all that, we went to stage two, which as I said, is mandatory water conservation. We focus mainly on the outdoor restrictions, limiting people to two days a week to irrigate their lawns and, and landscape. Only watering before 9:00 AM or after 5:00 PM. No washing down of sidewalks or driveways or anything like that. We ask you to use a broom. And one of the bigger issues around here is controlling runoff because of our clay soil. The soil doesn't absorb the water well and it creates runoff really easily. So my agency can help people with all those things and get them set up so they're in compliance with these new regulations. And of course, you know, we ask leaks to be addressed immediately. And as far as commercial businesses, we ask restaurants and other food service only to serve water on request and hotels and motels to only change linen when requested. Why do we focus on outside irrigation? Well, if you look at this pie chart, you can see that most residential water usage is directed to the outside areas, over 54% in the summertime of that residential water use is used for irrigation. So that's why we focus on that. To help ease this a little bit, you know, I'm not, I don't want to say I'm against turf, but there's a lot of turf that's not being used for recreation or being used actively. It's used for decoration and that's a real waste. Turf in our area uses 40 to 50 inches of water a year. Our rainfall on a good year, we get from about 11 to 13 inches of rain. So you have to supplement that with, by irrigating, so it uses a lot of water. So we're offering a turf removal program right now for the, for the customers of the agencies that I represent, and we're offering $2 per square foot of turf removed, up to 1,000 square feet maximum, so $2,000. And naturally there's special rules applying, funding is limited, but they, people are interested, they can contact me at the Water Resources Association. As you can see, we are getting more efficient with our water. In 1998, the average per person use of water per day was 220 gallons of water. In our 2020 Urban Water Management Plan, we see that that figure's dropped down to 117 gallons per person per day, which is, that's really good, but there's room for improvement. And it's essentially the outside. We've done a wonderful job as far as getting those old toilets out of circulation. We've replaced over 18,000 toilets since we've been in existence. We've handed out showerheads, faucet aerators, help people with leaks, but we kind of feel we're reaching a saturation level with those things and right now it's landscaping. We do have some things that are helping us with the new construction. There is the Model Efficient Landscape Ordinance, which only requires, 25% of your landscape area can be turf and the rest of it has to be low water usage plants with permeable hardscape like bark and gravel and things like that. When you drive by these new homes, you'll see that the lots are smaller, they're not using as much turf and they have, you know, a low water usage plants. So in 2015, we went to stage two as well back then and, you know, everybody was really helped out, you know, everybody understood what was going on. We actually exceeded the state mandate, which was 25% reduction to pre-drought levels. At that time, we were at 28%. So I want to give a congratulations to the community for that, but you know, this time around, I don't know what it is. I don't know if it's post-pandemic or we're getting out of the pandemic, all these other things that have happened. I don't seem to be getting the attention and people aren't rising to the occasion like we did in 2015. I'm doing a lot of outreach right now with ads, speaking at boards and councils and doing presentations. We had bill inserts and things like that, so I, I feel the words getting out now, but we need everybody to step up. Again, my agency is here to help people in the urban areas, make sure that they're in compliance with these rules. We can do leak checks and just make sure you're using water efficiently at your home. So I, I guess my call to action is for people to contact our agency and we'll go out and actually help them at their house and, and get them using water as efficiently as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Before I go to the board, is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, you can press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your
Elia Salinas?
Good morning, good morning, Mr. Chair and Supervisors. A question is, I'm hoping that the presentation is available for the public. And I, I encourage everybody to, to obviously conserve water and I think it would be a great idea if we got a proclamation from the board that we are in a drought and we should be conserving water. I'm, thank you for the presentation because I'm thinking about reviving my lawn to get it out, to conserve. So, but there's one major question because we were very successful and it wasn't us in San Benito County, but it was Pacific Grove that really went over and above in conserving and it actually damaged the sewer lines. So there is that issue that I know that occurred. I'm wondering if that is possible, that it could occur here in San Benito County? So I, hopefully somebody can answer that question either today or some other time. And then I really appreciate the work that San Benito County Water and with the staff that's been working and preparation. I've known about this for a while because I've been asking questions on this. Even though we have the water supply and they've been, they planned for this, I encourage the board to please be very vocal that we are in a drought, this is very serious, and do everything that we can to help conserve water. That is a vital resource for us. And I would mention with regards to, I guess I'll hold my comments on San Luis for later. Thank you.
On Zoom, you've been unmuted. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Mary Shaw Coron again. I just want to thank Sean and his staff for giving the excellent presentation. It was really educational. What I wanted to talk about is, you know, I, I do think that conservation is a very good idea and it sounds like in 2015, the residents were very successful in helping conserve. And it seems that we should be able to maintain that type of conservation. It sounds like it kind of lapsed after a while. My understanding from reading some reports on climate change is that our droughts can continue for a very long time, especially with climate change. And I think that it needs to be kind of a lifestyle change that's more permanent. And so I, I really agree with Sean that the education needs to be done, but perhaps, you know, have to figure out how to do it more effectively. But other things I was thinking that would make a more permanent change, I know that in some communities, they allow plumbing changes that allow shower water, laundry water to be reused for landscapes. So I think that those kinds of permanent changes should really be encouraged in our county. I believe that is legal in the state of California. There may be even more things that are allowed to be used for recycled water, you know, for the, for the landscape. The other thing I wanted to mention finally is this county really needs to consider growth as the other factor. I don't, in looking at that chart, that was really eye-opening. Basically we have to double the amount of water that's provided in the next 25 years. That's a big lift given climate change. And I don't, and that's assuming I believe around 2% growth or something like that, maybe a little bit more. I really think that the supervisors should consider the impact of growth, basically allowing more housing to be built, you know, for essentially Silicon Valley. You know, the impact on our current residents, moving forward of having to experience probably more severe cuts in water as we struggle with the water situation in the future. Think that is actually the easiest perhaps. I know there's a lot of infrastructure costs that were considered to get to that capacity in 25 years, but the other way is to just to reduce the growth if we can't simply accommodate that. And I think that's something that the supervisors should consider seriously. Thank you very much for your time.
No other comments.
Okay, bringing it back to the board. Does any board member would like to?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just want to clarify, the questions don't count on the five-minute clock, right?
No, no, yeah, it's back and forth.
Yeah, okay. So I did have a few questions. One, I just, as long as I just heard that, I want to echo the statement about growth. Maybe this counts to my five minutes, but you know, I think that's really the biggest factor here. And just to reiterate, I did propose a 1% annual growth cap and last year and just did not get support to move that forward. So as far as questions, the first question I have is the rates. I'm just curious, is there an expectation of when rates may increase and to what extent those rates may go up?
We're, we're actually in the middle of a rate study right now to look at what the impact of, of, of all of that infrastructure is going to be. We're, we're looking at options for capacity fees. So basically a new home would have to pay for the additional capacity that would be required to, to provide the service to it. And we're trying, right now, trying to figure out exactly what that's going to look like and trying to figure out how to phase the projects, what the, what the bonding requirements are going to be and how much money is available to be able to, to leverage against those projects that we're looking at. There's, there's several projects that, that we've got that may fit some of the Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart programs that would be, they're coming up available in the next year or two. And there's also some Sigma grant money that's, that'll be available. The, the requests for proposals are due in, in, I think, November this year.
Okay. And then the second question was for, I think more for our staff, there's implications with other environmental factors, the wildfire issue as well. So I'm just, it brings to mind, where are we at with our mowing program as far as, you know, making sure that we're out there getting our mowing done? I'm very, very concerned this year about the potential for wildfires with this, with this drought situation.
Yeah, I can, I'll invite Steve or Ariel up.
I'll invite Steve up, but I will tell you, I do know historically during this time of the year, the mowing more or less stops because if there's rocks inside the weeds when they're mowing, it usually will trigger a spark and I know there's been fires. So they try to do the mowing kind of the winter time, right, when they're growing, when it's growing, when it's still kind of greenish typically, but I'll, I'll pass that and defer that to Steve.
That's pretty much correct. We are mowing in areas where we don't anticipate rocks and boulders and those type of interactions, but I'd say at least half our time even currently is spent mowing, actually today, and then half is road maintenance. So it's about 50/50 at this point, so.
Great, thank you. And then what, what can we do? What's in the toolbox, I guess, from, from the county perspective? I know outreach is one thing. I know we have a new PIO coming. I think we should help along those lines and whatever, work as a partner with the Water District and get the word out on the outreach factor.
Immediately, I mean, we have to reduce our water use, obviously. So I, I ask all the public So I ask all the public agencies to put some kind of banner at the top of their websites announcing these restrictions, you know? And then of course, the call to action, like I was saying before, is call my agency. We'll do a leak check, make sure your irrigation system is working according to the new emergency water conservation measures. And then just see what your situation is. There's a way we can suggest areas where you can reduce your water use, maybe the turf removal program. Maybe you have older toilets, maybe you have funky shower heads that need replacing. We can help you with all of that. So that's, you know, one thing my agency can do. But, you know, everybody's got to take personal responsibility for their own actions as well. And they just have to make sure that they're using water as efficiently as possible. I don't like to say, stop using water. It's just like, just be aware of what you're doing. Don't start singing in the shower and forget how long you're in there. Or when you're, you know, washing a car, make sure you have a hose nozzle on there. That's one of the new water conservation measures as well. We can get those for free from my agency. But just every time you're using water, think about the purpose and don't overuse it or neglect to turn it off or anything like that. And attend to leaks. That includes institutions and, and, you know, schools, government buildings, everybody. You know, farmers are using water more efficiently. Everybody in the county has to use water efficiently. So that's what we can do right now. And then Jeff's looking for water supply for the next years.
But you mentioned landscaping, obviously, is the biggest factor here. So is there precedent? What's the precedent for, you talked about 25% on the new homes, 25% of the area that they can have their turf? What's the precedent for just banning lawns?
For what?
Banning lawns and new development.
You know, I don't know. It's something the politicians would have to decide. You know, we do, we do a water assessment and it's up to the politicians to decide how that water's going to be used.
Okay, because I know it's going to be that we have the zoning code later and I did take some notes on that particular. But I was just curious if you had thoughts on that. Just overall, just great job, Sean, Jeff. Great, you know, this, your team is on top of this. I know you are. You're always, you know, looking out for the community. And congratulations for those numbers going down as well. I know you've played a big part in that as far as the per day gallons that are used.
I want to add too, I mean, you know, like predicting climate in the future is, we're still very rudimentary. We have a good idea in the short term, but I mean, it's what's going to happen next winter? We have no idea. You know, this year I was all excited because in December, we had 160% of our average snow level up in the stairs. I'm like, yeah, baby, you know? And January to March, it just all went away. So, and that's happened in previous years as well. So, you know, this is the new reality. We have to make sure water is used efficiently at all times. It's not just during droughts. It's, it's a lifestyle. So thank you.
Supervisor Dirks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to reiterate because I, I know you touched on it, Jeff. But the Central Valley Water Project, that a lot of my District One residents see that fee on their property taxes. Can you just explain what that is? Because I've had some constituents call and say, hey, why am I still getting charged for this when I can't use the Blue Valve water?
That, that fee that you're, that you're talking about is the ad valorem tax that, that the voters voted for in 1977. That is to pay for the operation, maintenance and to pay for the capital portion of the project that was built at $100 million. So the reason that they still have to pay for it is because the operation, the maintenance of the, of the project are still there even when there's not water available to be delivered. And the debt service still has to be made.
Thank you for clarifying that. I just wanted it on record and so people can go back and hear that and listen to it again. Thank you very much. And thank you again, Jess. I want to reiterate what Supervisor Cosmic, he said, obviously I've had to get up to speed and get educated on this. And the both of you have spent significant time helping me get there. I really appreciate it. It's really important for me to understand for my District One residents, all of our water needs and concerns. And I've told you all, support whatever you guys are, you know, doing in the future. You've made really great decisions and you've really put San Benito County in a place where we're not in, in a place of desperation to date. And so I appreciate that and I hope all of our residents appreciate the work that your agency has done and both of you have done personally. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. It was rather informative, kind of scary, but informative. I have a couple of questions. One, the 96.6 million, how do we or you plan on funding that? What is the game plan? I know Supervisor Cosmic asked about rates, but I'm hoping it's not all going to be on the backs of the users here in the county. Additionally, I like the suggestion from the public about having a proclamation so that that way the community can understand knowledge is power. We get that information out. Currently, we don't have a PIO and so we have to toot our own horn. So maybe that might be a great way for the public to get involved. And then we can go ahead and incorporate some of the information so they can go ahead and reach out to you all. But that 96.6 million, where and how do we plan to meet that need? And then that 156 million for all the capital improvement projects, those are very daunting. And so what is the game plan in, in reaching that? And I did hear you say something about homes, you know, some sort of impact fee on the homes that are opening up and attaching to the projects. But I don't think we're going to hit the 96 million with that, with that route alone.
Not entirely, no. So like I said, the, the parts of the projects that are, that are dedicated to additional water supply, to supply that, that growth will be allocated towards the new homes and those capacity fees that we're looking at. That won't pay for everything. The water district has other revenue that we're looking at, at applying towards that. In addition to that, there'll be some costs that's going to be allocated to the existing customers for water supply reliability. So that, if you notice that piece, when we went through the presentation, there is a gap there today that exists from not being able to store enough water in the wet years to carry over into the dry years. And those projects, so that portion of the project, the cost of that, to help make up that gap so that we don't have to go from, you know, from a 50, 85% blend with surface water and groundwater down to 50% will be, will be dedicated and allocated to the existing customers for water supply reliability. So there'll be a blend of how those costs are going to be, be allocated. The exact numbers I can't give you yet because we haven't completed our, our rate study yet. But it, it will be done and we're going to be implementing that probably, it'll be done before next November.
Okay. And then what would the typical 88 gallons per user look like in terms of the 25% reduction? What are they going to feel? How are they going to experience that, that reduction going from the 117 gallons per person to 88? What's that going to look like in reality?
It's all in the landscape. When half your water use is dedicated to outside, if we can really tighten that up by reducing turf, by putting in climate appropriate plants, by putting in hardscapes, things like that, making sure your irrigation system is efficient. We see a lot of wasteful irrigation practices. You know, all those things that takes education. You know, I've been beating the drums for a long time and we're making progress, but it's slow going. So that's again, I ask for people to look at their own systems, reach out to us for help. But you really got to take responsibility for that and we're here to help you. But until you make that phone call, there's not much we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Tiffany?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think as we all know, our community has not always worked together well, the city counties. But water is one area that, you know, the county as a, as a whole has done, I think, a tremendous job. We're really lucky as a community that people back sixties and seventies were so forward thinking. And, and we have, you know, the San Felipe Water and it's, it's been a tremendous asset to the community over the years as well as just, you know, all the different agencies working together. So we're very fortunate. I want to thank you both for, for that and your predecessors. With that said, obviously, we're, you know, in a very difficult time. And I think, you know, it's naive for us to think that this is just a short term issue. Obviously, it's not with climate change. I'm wondering, and I know Jeff, you were talking about trying to get more capacity. So in the wet years, we have more storage capacity to carry us over into the dry years. But what happens when there's fewer and fewer wet years, which is almost certainly going to be something that we're going to see? You know, where do we go, where do we go there? Will there be opportunities if we don't, if we're not getting allocation, our normal allocation from San Felipe? I know you and I've talked about this, but opportunities to purchase water. We're very lucky to have the water basin, but I know if we go too many years, then we potentially get impacted there. So I'm just curious, you're, you know, when you look, when you look at the more scary aspects of this, where do we go?
Yeah, so, you know, the storage is still going to be the key to be able to take advantage of that. We do have, you know, there are contracts that I have for spot market waters, what we call it. They're short term contracts that are usually negotiated on five year terms. So we do do that. But it's also, it's also dependent upon hydrology. So normally in a year like, you know, in a normal year, like say last year, which not a normal year, it was a dry year. But this is, you know, when you stack these dry years up on each other, it gets more and more difficult to acquire extra water. But on the open market last year, I had about 5,000 or 6,000 acre feet of water available to me that I could purchase. So it, it, you know, that, that's one of the ways to do that. What you can do in, in normal years, you can still buy that, that water. And when you have the extra storage space available to you, you buy the water, even if it's not a wet year. In a normal year, you buy extra water on the open market and you can store it. San Benito and Santa Clara Valley Water Districts are in an enviable position for South of Delta contractors. We are the only South of Delta contractors that have our own individual storage. So we, so Westlands, even the Westlands, the biggest agricultural water district in the world, does not have its own storage. So in a wet year, there's a limit on how much water that those, those agencies can use, just like us. They, they won't be able to use 100% of their water unless they have other projects that they've got going on. So in a wet year, we're going to be able to pick up extra water because we have the, we're the only, Santa Clara and San Benito, the only ones that have storage. That's why we've been working so hard on trying to get these other storage projects moving forward. And that's why Santa Clara is spending so much money and effort on that, on that expanded Pacheco reservoir. Because that'll give them another 140,000 acre feet of storage space, which is huge for them. So, so those are the things that you can do. You know, looking out, you know, 50 years from now, I, I can't tell you exactly what it's going to be because it gets really fuzzy when you get out past about 15 or 20 years. But we know that it's going to be difficult. But if you don't start to do something now and you wait to try to find out what's going to, how, what it's going to look like to have a better clarity on what the situation is, you'll miss the boat. You won't get there. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta be able to take a chance and move forward with these projects. Otherwise, they won't be in place when you need them.
And then, well, thank you. And then looking specifically at South San Benito County District Four, which is my district, I see, you know, that area is designated exceptional drought, the, the most extreme drought. How does that, is there, is there a real difference? And how does that impact South San Benito County in terms of whether it be the water basin or otherwise? Do you look at that differently? And then a related question is, I didn't see Hernandez Dam as a possibility for expansion. I was just curious whether that's an option or not.
We did not look at Hernandez for expansion. One of the difficulties there is it would be incredibly expensive to expand Hernandez. Right now, as it stands, you know, I've been the general manager for the water district now for 15 years since I, and been, been at the water district since, since 1998. That reservoir has only spilled, I think, four times in that 25 year period. So spending a lot of money on expanding a facility like that, that you would only take advantage of, you know, maybe 20, you know, 20% of the time is, is, is not cost effective. But as far as, you know, that, that area south of there, you know, we don't have any monitoring wells south of Pisinas Valley because we just, that's, you know, that's, there's, there's nothing really to manage down there. But in Pisinas Valley, you know, it, there, the water supply is still strong in the groundwater basin in Pisinas Valley. It has dropped, but it's been over the last, you know, 20 years, it doesn't get benefit from San Felipe Water because it's upstream, it's up gradient in the system. But it's been relatively stable. And so the, the demand out there pretty much matches the water supply in Pisinas Valley. You know, if you get, you know, a huge expansion of, you know, vineyards up there, that might change the program a little bit. But that's one of the things that, why we included Brown's, that, that area that it's called, was called Trespinos Basin before, but it's really out Pisinas, we're going out towards Brown's Valley Road. We included that in our Sigma Plan because that's a key to the water supply for the rest of Pisinas Valley. Because as the water moves through that Trespinos Creek system, that's what, what helps feed the water supply for that lower portion of Pisinas Valley. So that was included in our Sigma Plan. So we'll be monitoring all of that out there. And if there are, becomes, it becomes a problem, the ultimate solution is to limit pumping. And that's, and it's not the way we want to go. We'll do everything we can not to get there. But, but the ultimate solution to that is to, is to physically limit pumping. And that's why there'll be, the water district is going to be monitoring all of the wells out there. And so there'll be measurements taken on all of the wells. Every, every well that's, that's in the, in the Sigma Plan will be monitored and interact to how much water is being extracted out of those wells, with the exception of like a small domestic well for a house or something.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so thank you, Jeff and Sean.
Thank you.
Onto item number four or three, I'm sorry.
Item number.
Item number three. Receive San Husso Reservoir Update. I know this is going to be another fun one. So who do we have, Ray, to speak?
Gracie will introduce the item.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, respected board members and members of the public. Today's item is provided update to the board on the San Husso. Before I get to the agencies, I did want to provide a brief background history. So the San Husso Reservoir is located southwest of Hollister. It is primarily used for upstream water storage as part of the San Felipe Division of the Central Valley Project. In 2008, it was discovered that the reservoir was infested with exotic invasive exotic zebra mussels. With that in mind, the Bureau of Reclamation, which is the owner of the San Husso Reservoir, decided to close off the reservoir for public recreational use. In 2009, it was later discovered that zebra mussels were also located in the Hollister Conduit at multiple locations. In June of 2019, the U.S. Department of the Bureau of Reclamation provided the final feasibility plan for the eradication of zebra mussels. And then later on that year, they also provided the final draft of the findings of no significant impacts as well as the final environmental assessment for that specific project. Your respective board received a previous update in April of 2021. During that update, Congressman Panetta's office expressed their efforts to add this project to the final, the fiscal year of 2021 Bureau of Reclamation spend plan, stating that the San Husso Reservoir was eligible to compete for funds from the Water Conservation and Delivery Account. From that, no funds were allocated that I am aware of from that attempt. Furthermore, what was provided at that update was from the Bureau of Reclamation, it was estimated that the project was going to cost about $5 million to eradicate the zebra mussels as well as the monitoring of the reservoir after the solution was implemented. And then from that update as well, your board was, was informed that any funds that may be allocated towards this project may be recouped by the Bureau of Reclamation. During that time, your board did express that any funds sought after be not recovered by the Bureau of Reclamation and that no reimbursement be required by either the water district users or our community members. With that, we have invited members from each respective agency. We have Sam Harris from Congress and Panetta's Office. We also have representatives from the other agencies, that is including the Bureau of Reclamation, the California Department of Fish and Wildlife and. and the San Benito County Water District as well. So with that, I would like to hand it off to Sam Harris to provide a little bit more information on San Houston.
Hey, everyone. Thank you, Gracie, for the introduction and background on, on the issue here. I'm Sam Harris, and I work for Congressman Panetta and cover this issue for, for the office. And I'm based out of his DC office. Just wanted to kind of give a little bit more light, I guess, to the funding issues that we're running into here in DC. I think that Gracie was correct in the assessment of the, you know, this not being included in the FY21 spend plan. We did get report language included in the Appropriations Bill that would have directed VOR to carry out this eradication process. But due to law and statute, this operation is considered actually operations and maintenance, which is not authorized to be funded in this way, and would require the local water utility district to actually reimburse VOR for carrying out this work. So we kind of, in the following, you know, fiscal years, when we're trying to include this in our congressionally appropriated spending and, and the BR budget, we're running into that same issue. And this is going to require us to actually quite literally change the law. And we're working through that process with the Bureau of Reclamation right now. We have, the congressman's just saying, deeply engaged on this. And it's, it's something we're working on literally every day with the Appropriations Committee and, and the Bureau of Reclamation. And I really appreciate the Water Utility District's partnership, as well as the, the Business Council's partnership and the county staff are staying engaged and, and helping us navigate this process and hopefully get money back to the county for getting, you know, the reservoir reopened and, and this eradication process completely executed. And so I think, just one of the latest updates, working with the Bureau of Reclamation, we're fortunate to have a good partner and, and their deputy commissioner there, who is actually on the Interior Subcommittee for Appropriations, and then worked with our office previously for the past few years, since 2019, to get this project underway. And so he's intimately and deeply familiar with this project and the issues and barriers that we've ran into since 2019, and has vowed to continue working with us to get this over the finish line. On May 20th, the congressman wrote a, a letter to the Bureau of Reclamation requesting that they re-engage with the scoping process to get an updated assessment on the scope of work as well as the cost. As Gracie noted, the, the last assessment was around $5 million for the cost of carrying out the entire eradication plan. Since that has been since 2019, and with just the rising costs of, of doing business, they expect that cost to be closer to $7 million. But to, you know, fully understand what funding we need and to push VOR forward on this, that is their next administrative step. And we've, you know, heard good things from the, the Bureau that they are, they are going to move forward with the rescoping of this project. And so we're going to continue engaging with them, pushing them to get that done. We, we requested it be done in an expedited fashion, so that, you know, we can come up with a game plan as far as funding goes. I, you know, in talking with a few of you on this project, it's, there's several different avenues for how we could, how we could get this done. And I think that, you know, I'm willing to answer some questions if I can, and would be interested in hearing what, you know, the willingness is of the county to partner with, maybe in some cost share agreements with the Bureau, and, and what we're able to secure here federally. I know this is a big priority for the community. We hear from constituents regularly, and, and work with the, the three different agencies and groups that I previously mentioned. So, you know, we're interested in, in moving this along and, and doing what we can, but also realizing the limitations that we're facing here, given the federal statutes. And, you know, I think this is, is worth exploring if this is a huge priority for the economic and recreation, you know, industries and, and aspects of the community and county. We would, you know, be interested in working together on, on finding some joint partnership, partnership or solution, you know, if we're able to secure part or, or all of this. But would just like to leave you with this is, remains to be a top priority for Congressman Panetta, and I look forward to continue working with you all, and happy to answer some questions if I can.
Well, before we have a, any comment from the board, I don't know if we want to have the other two presenters first?
I don't think they were just, they were not going to present, they were just going to be available for questions. So we'll go ahead and.
If we can go to public comment.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, you can press star nine on your phone, or they'll raise your hand icon on your screen. On Zoom, you've been unmuted. Please state your name. You have three minutes. You've been unmuted?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. Hey, thank you, everybody. My name's Carl Dealey. I'm with the Bureau of Reclamation. And I want to say Mr. Harris really described the situation fairly well. Really, it does pretty much come down to funding. And certainly, with regard to this invasive species, you know, it's, it's our focus, it's Anus at all, the spread of zebra mussels into surrounding water bodies in, in California. So to date and for the foreseeable future, you know, our strategy is restricting recreation activities. However, we are actually moving forward with a revision of the project estimates. And steps after that will be, you know, putting together maybe an acquisition plan. But currently, we don't have the appropriated funds to do it. And there's still a lot, I think, discussion ahead of us on funding. And thanks again, Mr. Harris. I think you really would have helped. That's all I've got.
You've been unmuted. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Good morning, Chairman Hernandez, Board of Supervisors. This is Christina Chavez-Wright on behalf of the San Benito County Business Council. We'd love to thank Mr. Panetta's staff, Suzie, Sam, et cetera, for working with us diligently on this issue over the last several years. We recently penned a letter at the request to the congress member and to the, the regional board and the Bureau of Reclamation, requesting support for financing the reopening and the restoration of the reservoir. As you may know, the city, the Business Council is a 501(c)(6) member-based organization representing over 45 local and regional municipal agencies, businesses, trade organizations, and major employers with more than 5,000 employees in the county. We requested funding for full eradication of the invasive species per recommendations of the Department of Reclamation's 29, September 2019 final environmental assessment, as well as ongoing annual funding for the maintenance of the reservoir and extensive distribution system. Our community lacks opportunities for fishing, environmental education, and outdoor recreation. Prior to closure in 2008, the reservoir was actively enjoyed year-round by thousands of community members throughout our region. Additionally, the reservoir provides approximately 10,000 acre feet of critical surface water storage for our families and farms, a much-needed resource in this time of extreme drought. We circulated a petition on change.org. It currently has 168 signatories of local businesses, community members, and residents that are seeking for reopening. We, we request your continued support of the opportunity and supporting our collaboration with state and federal resources for reopening this reservoir for our community. Thank you.
Elia Salinas?
Thank you. First and foremost, San Houston was built for ag and only ag. Ag, recreation came later. So unless the members of the San Diego County Business Council want to contribute themselves to the cost, they're more than welcome to. Taxpayers don't want to pay any more money. It was a great place to go. I mean, I took my son there. But based on, based on what has happened, and that muscle has also traveled, it's my understanding, over to San Juan Oaks. When they were working on the water pump, they found them some there. There's, this is the only location west of the Mississippi where this has occurred, is in San Benito County. And for as much as, you know, Ms. Wyatt stated, that thousands of people enjoyed it, I don't think it was thousands. And I'm not against this project, what I, trying to reopen it. What I am, what I am advocating for is that it has to come from federal funds that we, the people, do not have to pay back for. That is a lot of money that it's going to cost, and we're tired of being taxed. Again, San Houston is being used. It's not like it's not being used. It's used for, it's used for its purpose, for agriculture. That is the most important thing. That is the biggest economy in San Benito County is agriculture. So opening it up for, or going through the cost for a minimal amount of residents for San Benito County doesn't equal the cost that it would take for the entire community, for the county, to increase, to get a rate increase in their property taxes, or however it would be, that they would have to contribute to something that they don't use. We have citizens here that don't have kids in schools, and they're contributing to the schools. We're just getting tired of having to pay for other people at a cost to everybody. Again, it's for ag. Let it continue to be for ag, because it's not going to stop. And if you want to try to do something, let's try to do something that is not going to cost the San Benito County residents any more money. Thank you.
Valerie Eglin?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Salinas has a good point in that, that the San Houston Reservoir is essential for ag. However, it has an extensive amount of trails around it. It is a very healthy kind of water recreation for San Benito County residents. And it seems to me that if this muscle has traveled from another state with a boat, then this is across state lines, and it should be a federal responsibility. Thank you.
No other comments?
Bringing it back to the board, do we have any comments from the board?
Mr. Chair? So, this is like the worst broken record that I've ever heard. I've been around all these conversations through these years. And so I'm not going to repeat all the, you know, the things that have been said in the past. But I will say, in 2013, I just looked up, the estimated cost was $2.5 million to eradicate it. Now, we're hearing that it's potentially almost three times that. And we're being asked to fund part of that. It does need to be eradicated. And it really, you know, putting aside the recreational part of it, because I've openly said I support opening it for recreation. I think we could put in mitigation to prevent spread of the mussels. I, I, you know, I think there are ways we can do this. But the reservoir needs to be eradicated either way. I, this is a federal facility. We don't know who brought the mussels into the facility. We don't know that it was a local person, for instance. It could have been anybody. It could have been somebody from Florida, New York, Canada, or Ireland, for all we know. So I, it's very frustrating that we're being asked to pay for it. And it seems like that's our only option at this point. I have said I'm willing to at least look at possibly using ARPA funds personally, if that's what it takes. But it, it is very frustrating that the local taxpayers here in a small community with very limited revenue are being asked to pay a portion of this. So the recent tour I talked about in the past, I took with Supervisor Tiffany and others, it's not just a body of water. This is a beautiful facility, a lot of recreational opportunities, picnicking and whatnot. We're working, we're, we're sitting here working hard on expanding our park offerings in the county. But here we are, we have this wonderful park, basically, at San Houston that's been closed for 15 years. So I'm willing to invest something into this personally, because our residents have spoken loud and clear on this, and it's been overwhelming. I have not really spoke, aside from maybe Elia Salinas, I haven't really heard anybody talk about not wanting to open this facility. So I would like to see a long-term plan, not only to eradicate the mussels, but I, I really would like to see us, as a board, come to consensus on moving forward on a shorter-term plan to reopen the reservoir facility in a safe manner, and investigate what it would take to do that. We can't expect fishing anytime soon, if ever, but, but we can reopen for certain things, whether it's, like I said, picnicking, trail, trail usage, and other amenities that we could have there. But we need to get moving at some point. Personally, I believe we got to get moving now, make a decision, or else, one way or the other, or else we need to look at permanently closing this facility. It is frankly just tiresome to be going over this year after year after year. And so I would like us to stop playing rhetorical games, and stop having the same presentation that we hear every single year from the Bureau of Reclamation. They come back, and that record just plays over and over again, and it has a lot of scratches on it. So anyhow, I, I made my, my statement pretty clear. I'm wondering if we can have a discussion about what, what will it take to reopen this for recreation? How can we do it safely? And I don't personally want to be sitting here two years from now, having the same discussion that we've had since 2008. Thank you.
Any other supervisor? Supervisor Tiffany?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'll just agree with much of what Supervisor Kozmicki said. And he and I both had a tour of San, San Houston recently with Congresswoman Lofgren. And I've spoken, you know, personally with Congressman Panetta, and as well as Sam on this. And it is, as was just stated, it's, it's consistently one of the things that our constituents talk to us about. So I, I think that it, it is something that is within our community, people would love to see happen. But it is very frustrating. A question that I have for you, Sam, because what Supervisor Kozmicki said, we keep hearing the, the same thing, you know, just a new year. Do you have any idea when we're going to actually find out about some kind of resolution on the money issue? The reason I ask that is not just because we need to get this handled as soon as possible, but because there is a possibility of using, if we have to, I, I would agree with what everyone else says, this should be a federal issue. But if it would take us contributing a portion of the fix from ARPA funds, I think I would be supportive of that. But we have a limited time where we can use ARPA funds. And we, and we're already making decisions right now as to how we're going to use those funds. And so we need to know very soon if that, that's a possibility. So Sam, do you have any timeline at all? Or, or does the gentleman from the Bureau of Land Management, I mean Bureau of Reclamation, have any idea on the timeline?
I just on the appropriations process, I can kind of give you, we're working within a, a specific timeframe, just given when the bill will be written. And, and we're trying to obviously get this moved along in FY23, the next appropriations package. And so currently, like I said, we're, this does require a change in authorization or in, in law. And so we have to manage that process at the same time. We have a meeting planned with that authorizing committee, the Natural Resources Committee, to work with them on changing the authorization, which would eliminate the requirement that these operations and maintenance expenses are reimbursed by the local water utility service. So I would, you know, I would say, not 100% promise, but I think within a couple of, of weeks, we would have a clear idea of, of a path forward in FY23. You know, federally and congressionally appropriated money is, is going to be a viable option for this next package. And so I, I just want to also make clear on that note that with, as, as far as the suggestions of the local taxpayers paying for that, that's not, that's not the position of the Congress. of the local taxpayers paying for that, that's not, that's not the position of the congressman, nor his request, and the reason that we stayed very specifically engaged on this and continue working with the authorizers and appropriators here in Washington to move this project along. And so just want to, you know, make it clear that we are continuing to seek a resolution that uses federally appropriated dollars to, you know, keep you all from reimbursing such a project. I will make a note that I think something that we should be continuing to communicate on and working on, if we were able to secure federal funding and, for this project, and it be allocated to the Bureau of Reclamation for this eradication project, it still might be done in partnership with the local water utility service. If we were to secure that funding, it would then be up to you all and the local water utility service to ensure that, you know, you have the commitment to carry, carry out and, and see this project through. And I think that that is just a conversation that the community would have to have to make sure that everyone's in alignment on actually getting that done, because the Bureau is going to want that security and commitment from you all, that you actually, you know, want this eradication taken care of, and that you're willing to work with BOR on that end. So just something to kind of put out there. I know in conversations with the Water District, and I think the general conversation for years has been that the infestation has, you know, only created minor operational changes, and you can't justify raising rates on, on paying customers or taxpayers to address this as operations or maintenance expense. And so, you know, obviously, that's why we want to continue finding a federal path forward. But we also want to just, you know, encourage everyone to be in alignment for when we are able to move forward with this project.
And Sam, thank you.
I just wanted to add to what Sam said, from the reclamation side. Definitely, we have to have cooperation on this and collaboration to make it happen, regardless of the funding source. Certainly, I mean, the reservoir, one of the elements of the existing eradication plan caused for the desiccation or drying of the mussels that are existing at certain levels of the reservoir and that, that would mean drying down water. That wouldn't mean actually taking water away from the reservoir. So definitely, I cannot do this without cooperation.
Jeff, could I maybe ask you to comment, because obviously this would involve, let's say, best-case scenario, if suddenly we get the money from the federal government to get this, get this done. But it is an ongoing, I know there's many years involved, and obviously, the primary use of this is a storage facility, as you said, it's a key part of the whole water system. Is the San Diego Water District, would they be able to get involved in this and support it if we, if we got the money?
Absolutely.
Probably not on. I think, okay, here we go. Yeah, absolutely, we would work with them. And we have been working with them since 2008 to be able to move the project forward. Initially, the Water District was the one that took the lead in looking at what the eradication method would be. So we've spent like over a million dollars on studies to try to figure out how, how to manage the project and how to manage the problem. So would we, would we move forward with it? Yes, under certain, certain conditions. Like, like Carl said, the reservoir has to be drawn down in order to be able to implement the eradication plan, because otherwise, it takes, the more water that's left in the reservoir, the more potash that you're going to have to have and be able to introduce into the reservoir to be able to, to, to meet that 100 part per million potash level to be able to kill, kill the zebra mussels. So there would have to be some coordination with the Bureau of Reclamation as far as if we have to draw the reservoir down, what does the Water District do for water supply in that time? Because I have to, San Justo is critical. If I didn't have San Justo today and have the ability to store water in San Justo, there would be no water available for the two treatment plants for the City of Hollister. In addition to that, you know, I got a 0% allocation this year from the Bureau of Reclamation for agriculture, but I was still, there was still some agricultural customers that carried water over. I allowed to carry water over in San Justo. So they had some water to use this year on, on some of their parcels that did, that may not have availability for groundwater. So coordination in that way is critical. I can't, I wouldn't be able to participate if I didn't have some cooperation from Bureau of Reclamation that if I'm going to allow the reservoir to be, to be drawn down and put at risk for that water supply, that that equivalent amount of water would be able to be carried over in San Luis Reservoir and stored there, so I have access to it. And up until now, the answer to me has been no, that they would not do that. So it's going to be a difficult coordination and difficult cooperation problem to deal with. All they have to do is tell me, yes, they'll, they'll allow me to store water for several years in San Luis Reservoir without risk of loss. And that's what would be critical, because I have to have that availability of water. Even if we did do it, though, it's still going to take time to draw the reservoir down. It can't be drawn down, you know, overnight. So it would take probably several years to be able, to be able to draw the reservoir down to the level, if it was full, to the level that's necessary. So there's coordination that has to be started immediately if the, if the, if money was made available, and the decision was to go forward with it today, it would still be probably three or four years before the actual implementation would occur. And then you're going to have three or four years of monitoring after that to be able to see, was it effective or not? So you're looking, you know, seven to 10 years out before that reservoir is ever going to be opened, if that's, if that's the plan and the, and the direction that you want to go.
Okay, well, so it'll be, we'll be able to open it for recreation about when Highway 25 is fixed, it sounds like. But I get it. I appreciate you explaining. But Jeff, by the way, the, the question or the suggestion that Supervisor Cosmickey mentioned, is, is that a possibility? I don't know if you're the one to answer it, but where, you know, there's some recreation in terms of trails, the, you know, just, you know, as opposed to, you know, boating, fishing, et cetera?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure there would be. The difficulty is, is that if you're going to have recreation up there of any form, you're going to have to have, it's going to have to be managed and staffed for the entire time that it's open. So if you're going to have an open weekends or something, there's, you're going to have to have county staff up there that's managing it and watching to make sure that on the far end of the reservoir, there's not somebody that's putting a boat in, or a inflatable boat with, or, or standing on the shore fishing. So it's, it's not going to be as quite as simple as just, you just use the trails. It still has to be managed.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Any other board member? President Gonzalez?
This is a very complex problem, and I've been watching it for years. And as a matter of fact, my, my own Parks and Rec Commissioner is the biggest advocate to open up the, the reservoir. But when I look at the map for the USGS map, and I show, and I see all of the places where trying to eradicate the zebra muscle have failed, and the few areas where it's been successful, it's a lofty goal for this board to decide to open up willy-nilly for recreational purposes. It's going to be very difficult to monitor the public that is using the facility to keep them out of the water. And it will be very easy for San Benito County to contaminate every other body of water that we have here in the region. We just had a presentation right now about the drought and being very careful how we spend our, our water. But yet, at the same point, those that are advocating opening up the reservoir, we have to draw down and, and basically get rid of that water in order to be able to treat it. So I don't think this board is going to be in a position to be able to accommodate the request of the community. I totally understand there's a huge, a huge faction out there in the community that want to have access to that water, but we, as a board, need to be responsible that we do not make it so that the zebra muscle then contaminates every other body of water in the state. And so right now, keeping it closed is the only way that we can guarantee that we're not going to contaminate it. So that's where I'm coming from. It's not that I'm not sympathetic to the recreational purposes, because as Ms. Eglin said earlier, I've been the, one of the biggest advocates for the parks and reach San Benito, but it's a very high responsibility that we hold as legislators here in this county to ensure that we do not contaminate any other water source in the state.
Supervisor Dirks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate Supervisor Gonzalez's comments, and along with Supervisor Tiffany and Cosmickey regarding this issue. You know, my children have never been able to enjoy the San, San Justo reservoir, so I understand, you know, the, the need and the want, but I think, you know, Jeff brings up a really good point. If we don't have anywhere to put the water, I, we can in good conscience, you know, move forward with that piece of it. But if we can get the Bureau of Reclamation on board and have a solution to put the water somewhere, I mean, it sounds like it's going to be, just like everything I've experienced, government takes a little while. And so it's going to be a little while before we'll be able to enjoy it again. Perhaps my grandchildren would be able to enjoy it, but, but in any case, I, if that's our long-term goal, to reopen this reservoir, then, then we need to look at that long-term goal. But as, as it was pointed out, we need, you know, coordination from everyone in order to do it. So we need the Bureau of Reclamation, and once we get the funding, the longer we wait, the more expensive it's going to be to Mr. Cosmickey's point as well, or to Supervisor Cosmickey's point. So, you know, I really think if we can get everyone on board, then, then yeah, I guess let's move forward, but we can't jeopardize our water source right now. That obviously is, is very clear, I think, to everyone in this room and listening today.
So my, all, my comments are specific to the, what I heard was a little bit of a contradiction, and I def, I didn't want to belabor this too much, but Sam had mentioned that they're working on doing another scoping, right, which by default is an environmental process. It's reassessing the, not just, yeah, so I don't know if it's including the cost, but I know that basically it's them figuring out, you know, what it's going to take to make that happen. So can you explain a little bit?
I would, I would recommend Sam explaining that, but my understanding is scoping is to evaluate the current cost for the eradication, and I'll let him elaborate further. But I would suggest allowing Sam and Congressman Panetta to move forward with changing legislation to allow funding for them to cover, or it to be covered, so it doesn't come out of our current coffers in any way. And then at that point, I would say then move forward with, working with the different agencies to move forward with that. But I'll, Sam, I don't know if you want to elaborate any further?
I would actually defer to Carl if he does have any idea on this. I know he probably has closer than I do.
Thanks, thanks. A couple things. We're going to make sure that we go forward with this as, cause estimate and scoping, and we're going to, I've insisted that we do it without dipping into reimbursable funds, so it, it won't be, it won't come out of district operations. And I'm, I'm very sensitive to Jeff Catania's feelings on this as well. So yeah, I, I can say that at least the effort to revise the cause estimate on the, on the study, that's going to be, or on the eradication, that's going to be done without using any of the district's dollars.
It's that seven million is more of an assumption, right? Because scoping, you're going to do a revised, but...
Well, I think that's an important point as well, because, I mean, the study that we did and completed in 2019 is, is really a feasibility level study. And it could be, I, you know, I hate to make predictions, but, you know, I think when, when Mr. Harris was saying upwards of seven million, I think that's, that's being realistic. So it's going to be very, very costly.
Final point is, from what Carl had mentioned, there really is no intention of opening it for recreation anyways, right? So that, that almost makes any of the conversations moot, unless we can get them to change their mind. I don't see how we're going to move this thing forward, even if it, if it's not going to be, it's going to be to the benefit of preserving the, the reservoir, but outside of the community interest, I think that's really, that means we have to, by default, educate the public that they're not going to get what they want. And I'm not saying we shouldn't fight for it. I, I'm for one, willing to fight for it, but I don't see the will of the board here, unless I'm wrong.
Mr. Chair, I, I mean, this is a big assumption, but assuming the federal government, that the laws are changed, Sam and Congressman Panetta are successful, we certainly, I think, should let that play itself out, and we do get the federal funding. There's a lot of hurdles to go through. Obviously, we've got to deal with the, the issue that, that Jeff Catania brought up. And I totally agree with Supervisor Gonzalez, the first priority is preserving the uses as a water source. But I still think that it sounds to me like there's a, there's a possibility of eventually opening it recreation if the money can be found and the solutions be found. If we don't start now, you know, it may be 10 years, but if we don't start now, it will never happen. My understanding is, is that the zebra mussels don't really interfere with the way, you know, with the use as a, as a water source right now, fortunately. But anyway, again, I just reiterate what, what Ray said. I think, let's see how this plays out. There's no downside to it, and then, and then we can decide as a board if the money is there to, to be spent, you know, if it's, if it's doable.
Point taken. So yeah, my final comments is, I guess, just setting clear expectations with the public. That's probably the most important. Just final thoughts is, if the zebra muscle was so invasive, why wouldn't we have eradicated it in the first place, right? Now we're dealing with everything getting more expensive. It's pushing it out to a less chance, a lower chance of us being able to solve that problem. Anyways, so we're done with that item.
Thank you.
So we, I know we have a hard stop at 12, I believe, because closed session items.
12 or 12:00? Was it 12? We have somebody online. Okay, so yeah, so 12 o'clock, it looks like we have a hard stop, so.
So on to item number four. So this is another phone one. Accept the certification of the initiative petition to amend the San Diego County General Plan to Remove Commercial Nodes and Regional and Thoroughfare Node Designations and to Require Voter Approval for Future General Plan Amendments. Redesigning agricultural rangelands or rural lands to other uses.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Board Supervisors. So on May 2nd, the proponents presented and filed initiative petition with the raw count of 4,092 signatures to amend the San Benito County General Plan. Pursuant to Election Code Section 9115, a random sampling verification mythology of 500, 500 signature was supplied as specified in California Code of Regulations. The statistical valid signatures are 3,419, which is 165% the minimum required valid signatures necessary to qualify for election. The sample ballot of initiatives statistically exceeds the 110% of the required signatures as specified in per Election Code 9115. The county clerk hereby presents the certification of initiative petition to amend the San Benito County General Plan to Remove Commercial Regional and Thoroughfare Node Designations and to Require Voter Approval for Future General Plan Amendments Redesigning Agricultural Rangelands or Rural Lands to Other Uses. The Board Supervisors may take one of three of the following actions. First, they can adopt the measure without alteration at the regular meaning at which the certification of the petition is presented, or within 10 days after it's presented. Two, they can submit the measure without alteration to the voters pursuant to Section 1405, or they can order a report pursuant to Section 9111 at a regular meaning at which the certification of petition is presented. When the report is presented to the supervisors, the board shall either adopt the measure within 10 days or order an election. However, taking into consideration that the Board Supervisors already commissioned a 9111 report on May 24th, staff recommends that the board order a report to be presented at the next scheduled meeting, which is June 28th, before taking one of the two actions.
So before we have Board Supervisor comments, we can go to the public, please.
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, you can press star nine on your phone, or the raise your hand icon on your screen. can press star nine on your phone, or the raise your hand icon on your screen. Andy Shahkaran.
Hello again. Just want to thank the Elections Department for doing their job and going through all those signatures. They're, I've always found that department to be one of the most efficient and effective in our county, and I thank, again, I thank them for that. I do want to remind people that it was only two years ago when people were gifted with a mailer that went out all over the county explaining that the people in this county did not support this idea, and that that's why we were not able to collect our signatures, rather than that we had pulled back because of the pandemic, because they thought it was a risk to the public. It's clear now, having collected as many signatures as we did, that there's significant interest in this county around these issues, regardless of where your position is on it. So, you know, I talked to many, many people, and there's deep concerns about the patterns of growth is, and concerns regarding issues of traffic, water, changing quality of life. And so I imagine that this will be a actively debated initiative when it's on the ballot. As to whether you should do or not do an economic report regarding this, I'm ambivalent about it. I think any economic report would be purely speculative, since we don't know how much the people would deviate from where you would vote on these issues. So I suspect that anything there, you know, could be taken with an iceberg of salt. One advantage for the developers is they would cherry pick soundbites to put in their advertisements, and you can imagine that their budget for this campaign will dwarf anything that we've ever seen before in San Benito County. So, everybody hold, hold on and be prepared for the onslaught of literature, advertisements, et cetera. So it's up to you. Thank you very much.
Elias Salinas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board, and I appreciate Andy's words of thanking and having confidence in the Elections Department, because the last time he spoke was the opposite of what he just said today. So the irony, and not only that, he was the committee that worked on the general plan. There were about 52 people, if not more or less. But the irony is that Andy and Mary were on that committee, and they approved the general plan, and now here they come, and they want to completely, economically, in my opinion, destroy San Benito County. A petition was placed out before the public based on misinformation, intentional misinformation. Although, you have no choice but today, but to vote yes, because that is the requirement. I just want to be on public record that this initiative was taken by this group of people intentionally going to the public on, based on lies, and they continue to lie. And unfortunately, you're going to have to make a choice today that you must by law approve this. But it is really ironic that you have a gentleman here today praising the Elections Department, when the last time he was accusing them of doing unethical things. And then, again, they were on the committee to approve the general plan. So we will go forward with this, but yes, there will be a lot of information being placed out there again by this committee, so that people can vote. And unfortunately, the people vote on misinformation, and they don't go any further than that. So as those that are opposed to, to this initiative, will have to go out there and do double the work to make sure that the voters are informed. Thank you.
Ray Pierce.
Hi, my name is Ray Pierce. I'm a resident of San Benito County since 1971. My input on this is, I started on the Planning Commission, and actually brought it out of G-PAC into the Planning Commission level when we, when we voted on it. I sat in on the G-PAC Committee, the General Plan Action Committee meetings, and had a lot of input. There was seven years of work that went into this, and workshops that the public attended, and they were, the nodes were all there when, when it was set in, and the explanation by the specialists that basically said, these could be a good, basically tax base for the county, or the public could look forward to tax increases to help support the county. So this helped coffers, and it wasn't really a, a big issue at the time, but I think we didn't have the flyover at Aromas, and also the 101 livestock, and my, my memory is, that was also not included in. It was already its own zoning. But I have to ask you, why can something like this come onto the ballot when we had to spend all the time with the SEQA and everything else in order to get these zonings? And now you're talking about removing something without a SEQA. It sounds like this is an illegal petition. To me, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know, but if we had to do all that work in order to incorporate all of those elements in the general plan over all the number of years that we did, how can that ballot box planning just reverse it overnight? So I would be very careful of even allowing this to come in at all and, and encouraging it in any way. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
On Zoom, you've been unmuted. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Mary Shahkaran. Again, I normally reside in San Benito County, but for a few days, I've been visiting my family home in Santa Rosa, Sonoma County. The reason I bring this subject up is because I think many people don't realize that this particular initiative is based on what several other counties have done, including Sonoma County, Napa County, Ventura County, over 25 years ago. In fact, Napa, which was the first to do this type of initiative, did it over 30 years ago. So this is not an unusual plan. I think that some of the characterization is really unfair. This is a very tried and true process. It's basically taking certain decisions, not all decisions, but rezoning of large tracts of agricultural rural lands, and just shifting the decision-making to, to the voters. And I believe this was actually even used, I think that there was, I was working very hard and raising children, but this has been tried before in our county, where I think the effort to do, Rancho San Benito, the supervisors let the voters actually vote on this. So it's not an unusual thing to do, to let voters weigh in. I think it's a really good democratic idea. Counties like Sonoma, Napa, Ventura have done very well, actually. It's not been a burden. I've talked to people there, so I just want to clarify that. The other thing I want to clarify is that my husband and I were never on the Citizens' Advisory Committee for the general plan. We did speak at one of the meetings during the general plan process in 2015, but from people who have been on their Citizens' Advisory Committee, like Jan Saxton, we have heard from her that the committee did give a lot of good input, but the supervisors decided to pay attention to the requests of the developers. So the plant general plan we have is really a developer's general plan, not one that citizens wanted. But thank you so much. Oh, I just want to also mention that I think you should just let voters have a vote on this. I don't think a, a economic impact study would be very accurate, because you're basically speculating on what the voters would be voting on. It's like saying, what's the economic impact of having supervisors decide on some of the development? It's basically just letting voters have a say, and I think you should proceed to let them have a say. Thank you so much for your time.
No other comments.
Okay, bringing it back to, to the board, unless we have specific questions about the certification excitement, and if the board does want to have discussion about this, I recommend, I think, bringing it back to a separate day, but, I mean, ultimately, I'm just going to ask for a vote, if you guys, unless you have questions about the certification itself. Okay, can I make, can I get a motion, please?
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to respond to a couple of comments. Yeah, we really have no choice but to move forward with this, and, and certainly, we've already made the decision to order the economic report. Just a couple of comments. Once again, I think I've made myself clear, and many of us up here have made ourselves clear where we, how we feel about this initiative. To try to compare Samuel County to Sonoma, Napa, Ventura County is ridiculous, frankly. You know, those are rich counties. They have a lot of things that we do not have in terms of revenue. We are a poor county. Revenue is a huge issue for us in this community, and if this were to pass, this would absolutely gut our ability to have economic development and sales tasks come in through commercial industrial projects. You know, the people, the proponents of this initiative seem to be saying that let the, the voters decide, but the problem is, I have not seen a project yet in this community that the proponents are in favor of. So I can guarantee you, if this were to pass, they will continue to pass on their misinformation and try to defeat every economic development project that would come before the voters. So anyway, I'm obviously strongly opposed to this initiative. I think an economic development report is going to clearly show how devastating this can, will be to our community, and I look forward to seeing that report. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, brief comment? Yeah, I've said before that, you know, these economic impact studies, I don't care what the issue is, what side you're on. I mean, they're, frankly, they're, essentially, they're used as advocacy, so I'm not, not a fan of them. I'm just wondering, we wait till June 28th, just want to make sure we have off the entire month of July. Just make sure that we do, yes, we do. Just want to make sure that, you know, there won't be any issues with deadlines and timeframes. I understand we have to basically get this certified by August 12th, I guess?
Correct. So if the decision is made to go one direction or another on the June 28th meeting, it would not affect this initiative being on the ballot for November?
Okay, thank you.
Any other? I concur with Supervisor Tiffany, but I'll keep my comments to the, yeah, the 9/11 report. So with that said, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the 9/111 report and have it brought back to us to make a decision to put the initiative on, on the November ballot.
We have to accept the petition first, though.
Yes, that's, accept the certification.
Accept it, we'll accept the certification, and then the rest, I will keep the motion the same.
Per staff recommendation.
Okay, I will second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Onto item five, accept.
Okay, can we reiterate the 9111 report, just to make sure that that is, is, is that reflects in that motion?
So the 9111 report.
9111 report? That is going to happen, correct? That, that's the process?
That's the next step.
The 9111 report is, is currently in an administrative draft, and it will be on the agenda for May 28th.
Correct.
Okay.
June 28th.
June 28th.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, so, point taken Supervisor Gonzalez to clarify, yes, it will be on the June 28th. That's what I was referring to. So on to item number five, informational report of pending major projects.
Yes.
Abraham Prado, please.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Abraham Prado, Assistant Director of Planning and Building Services. And the item before you is an informational report, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, on the development projects that the county RMA department is currently working on. These are just the major projects, major subdivisions, use permits that are major, not necessarily focusing on all the different other projects that we have going on, like minor subdivisions, conditioning use permits. These are just on the major projects. And briefly, planning applications are ordinarily processed in the order of which they are filed. And because of the number of simultaneous applications currently being processed, and the intensity of the projects that I will briefly go over in a few slides, staff seeks direction from the Board of Supervisors on the prioritization and scheduling of the public hearings. So this map here before you is a work in progress map that we're working with the GIS department on basically all the major projects that the county is working on currently, about 18 different projects. And as you can see at the very top, it's in an olive green color. It's a built and occupied projects, and these are mostly projects that have already obtained some type of entitlement from the county, either Planning Commission or Board of Supervisors. They have received already a final map, building permits, have began construction, and have essentially occupied for the most part. There may be a few things that are left, such as the acceptance of the subdivision, but for the most part, it is, it is, these are projects that are complete, as you can see here on the olive green colors. The next one is the, the lime green colors, and these are projects that have been approved by the county, that have received entitlements, but have yet not begun construction, because they may need building permits or final map, but certainly that have received some type of entitlement for development. The purple ones that you see there are ones that really should be environmental review underway. It says environmental impact report. Most of them are actually doing, we're conducting an environmental impact report at the time, with the exception of number 18, Traveler Station, that's a mitigative negative declaration. But those are the ones that we have going on, and those are the ones I'm basically going to be focusing on with this presentation. And then the orange ones are under construction, as you can see, Santana Ranch, and number eight, San Juan Oaks. If you're driving on 156 and you look towards San Juan Oaks, you'll see a lot of grading that's going on at, at the time, at the moment. And then the blue ones are parcels that are within the county's jurisdiction. However, they have started the annexation process into the city, in this case, the City of Hollister, and they have gone through the pre-zone approval through the city council, but still need to go through LAFCO for, for entitlements. And the major developments that we will be talking about briefly this morning is the ones on, are the ones on purple. Essentially, as you can see on the screen, number 17, the landfill expansion, number four, Lands of Lee, number one, Richmark, number 18, Traveler Station, number 15, bedable commercial use permit, and last but not least, number 14, Strata Verde. And each of these projects are significant in size. Staff is preparing the environmental documents at this time to cover a vast amount of information on each of these projects that are, that include but are not limited to all these different sections on an environmental review, which include aesthetics, biological resources, cultural resources, greenhouse gas emissions, public services, transportation's a big one, that evaluates traffic, and so forth and so on. And so, as mentioned, the majority of these projects have an environmental impact report that are, that are being considered, with the exception of the Traveler Station. And if you like, I can go into detail in regards to the differences, but I know you have a hard stop at 12, and you can let me know if you'd like me to, to do that, once I finish my presentation. Traveler Station is the first one that I would like to acknowledge, and this is the proposed Traveler Station is a use permit request for a proposed 4,000 square foot convenience store, auto filling and truck services, propane cells, electric vehicle charging stations, and a county informational kiosk. The Traveler Station would be in operation 24 hours a day. And the update on this is that the mitigative negative declaration has been complete as of May 2nd. There has been travel consultation requested. If you recall, back in April, your board designated my colleague Ariel Getzbein and myself as the contacts for travel consultation, and we've done a few other projects, and this, we're working on this one here. And so the projected planning commission date for this project is August 17, 2022. And this is a mitigative, so this, this one goes directly to Planning Commission. It would only go before the Board of Supervisors if the, if the decision of the Planning Commission is appealed, and it will come to you either, say, September or October of this year. So these six projects are essentially going to be coming in before either Planning Commission or the board within the next six either planning commission or the board within the next six to nine months or so, with about four of them within this year, before the end of the year. This one being, being one of our planning commission and before you if appealed. I'll, I'll give a brief summary at the end with all, all six projects. This next one, Lands of Lee, is a, it's a tentative subdivision map that proposes a zone change, plan unit development, a vesting tentative map on approximately 27.45 acres to allow the development of 141 residential lots consisting of 121 single-family market rates and 20 attached duet units. And so, this is east of February. And the projected release date of the draft environmental impact report as of the preparation of these slides was July 5th, 2022. The projected planning commission date would be September 21st. And the projected Board of Supervisors date for this project is October 25th. So in discussions with staff and county council, one of the things that we've noticed on the preparation of the draft environmental impact report is that under the utility sections and, and various other sections of the EIR, we wanna make sure that utilities are, are addressed as proposed. And so, one of the issues that's come up and we're, we're working on is the sewer service. And so, it's, it's no secret that it's been in discussion at the LAFCO level and there appears to be discussion also at Sunny Slope and potentially with the city council, the City of Hollister. And so, the hope is for us to have a clear path, a clear as staff path of, of how the sewer service is gonna be impacting the, the proposed project. And it's my understanding that there's been previous practice on a similar project nearby, I believe it was Fairview Corners, that EIR was approved and the project was actually approved with the mitigation measure or condition of approval that says that the applicant shall, you know, work on getting sewer services prior to, you know, breaking ground or prior to issues of building permits. But really, it's best practices to include that information as part of the environmental impact report. So that way, we know and we analyze it thoroughly. And so, the hope is that we have that information sooner rather than later. And at that point, we can hopefully keep the July 5th draft environmental impact report date for this project, or maybe just, you know, shift it a little bit. But regardless, right now, county council and the applicant's lawyer are, are discussing the, any legal implications of whether we can just move forward in case there is no direct path forward in regards, or answer in regards to the sewer service. So that's being discussed at, at this time. The next big project is the John Smith landfill expansion. And the proposed project includes a 388.05 acre expansion of the existing 95.16 acre facility. As you can see here on the map, the lines delineated in red is the existing boundary. The line delineated in black is the expansion proposal. And the projected release date of the draft environmental impact report is at the beginning of July, kind of similar consistency, consistent with the Lands of Lee. And then the projected planning commission date would be September. And the projected Board of Supervisors date would be October 25th. And so, these are projected dates. Once the draft EIR comes out, there is a comment period. And so, there may be some significant comments that we receive that may affect the schedule in regards to, we are required to respond to these comments. So, but these, this is what we are seeing right now, based on our discussions among staff and county council. This next project is the Beddable Commercial Use Permit. It proposes new commercial lodging and recreation uses. At build-out, the project would develop approximately 108,425 square feet of commercial space consisting of a gas station, convenience store, restaurant, amusement buildings with exhibits, a motel with outdoor pool, and an outdoor movie screen, and an outdoor event center. As you can see on the site, on the site plan, the line delineated in red is essentially the project site, but the actual development is proposed on the line delineated in yellow. And the proj, projected release date of the draft environmental impact report is July 1st, consistent with the landfill expansion, potentially Lands of Lee as well. And the proj, projected planning commission date would be September 21st. And the board would hear potentially this item on October 25th. So we're starting seeing this pattern already of multiple big projects. This next one is the Ridge Mark Infill Tentative Subdivision Map, which proposes 160 single-family residential market rate lots, plus 15 duplexes, two units on each duplex, 30 below-market rate units there, for a total of 190 units, with a proposed hotel at 154 rooms and additional commercial space of 31,800 square feet. And the, this, this project is actually geared to be a little bit further along for, in regards to when it's gonna be presented and the draft environmental impact report released, which is anticipated October 15. However, as you can see, when, when this project is released for public comment, we will be working on the public hearings for the others. So we'll be managing all, all that work during this time. Last but not least, Strata Verde Innovation Park, which proposes a specific plan, a zone change, and a general plan amendment for a vesting tentative map and a development agreement to allow the creation of a new automotive research and development campus and business center on approximately 2,767 acres. And at maximum build-out, the project would include approximately 7,221,159 square feet of development for testing grounds, research park, e-commerce, and commercial areas, which accumulates to about 165 acres of the seven, of the 2,767 acre site. And the, the projected draft environmental impact report is expected to come out first quarter of 2023, between January and March, then the public hearings at the summer and or fall of 2023. You know, summer, summer or fall. And so, the summary here, as you can see, the Lands of Lee, John Smith, embeddable are around the same time that are projected to come before the public hearings. We have the Traveler Station that if appealed by the planning commission, that can be a fourth one, that can be added around the same, to the same. And so, our hope is just essentially to inform the, the public, inform the board about the major projects that are going on at this time. And that staff feels that each of the major proposals really merit to be heard individually, if possible, so that no more than one project at a time is heard before the Board of Supervisors and for the staff to bring it before you and for the public. And the reason for that, again, if the direction is not to move forward in that way, and if there's multiple, and if that's, that's your desire, we can certainly do our best to accommodate that. But the reason for this is because, as you know, these are big projects and it's, takes a lot of time to prepare the public notices, to prepare the packets, to prepare the notices that go out. And not only that, but the environment, the draft environmental impact themselves, they could be hundreds, potentially thousands of pages. That's not including the technical reports that are added, the transportation impact, greenhouse gas emissions, that could put it in the thousands of, of pages to analyze carefully. That's not including the exhibits, the illustrations, and the maps that should be carefully considered by the members of the public, respectfully the board and staff. And as we know, we as human beings, we are very special, we are very particular. One of the things that makes us unique is our free will. And we understand that our free will, there is a lot of, how would I say, passionate ways of thinking in regards to each of these projects and for and against. And so, that is why the public hearings are for. And so, we feel that these, each of these projects are gonna carry a lot of emotions. And so, therefore, it would be good to have one project at a time and, you know, not necessarily jeopardize any type of, or overwhelm the emotions on, on these projects that need to be carefully considered. And with that, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors receive the informational report. And if desired, give staff policy guidance or direction on the prioritization of timing, sequencing, and scheduling of public hearings on the project applications. And so, very briefly, what that means is that if you do give preference and if we do land on, say, two or three projects like Beddable, if the landfill expansion on the same meeting, and if your preference, say, would be Beddable, then at that point, we would put Beddable first, and then the hope is to put the other, the, the project that's second on your list at the following board meeting. So, and, you know, at that, at that time, it can also come before you. If you're willing to do special meetings as well, we can, we can work with you on that. So, thank you.
So just to clarify, Abraham, what you're asking is for us to pick one, you know, basically a priority order, and one is gonna go per meeting?
That, that is a hope. That's correct.
That's the hope.
Sure.
One per project.
Yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Chair, can, I know we gotta go to the public, but can I ask a question of Abraham?
Can we wait till we get public comment really quick?
Oh, sure.
If you'd like to make a comment, please provide a speaker card in chambers. On Zoom, dial star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. Charlie Hazelbaker.
Good morning, Board. My name is Charlie Hazelbaker. I work for KB Home. We're working with Mr. Lee on his property. I would like to respectfully thank staff for all their time and effort that they put forward with all these projects. Everyone is super busy, lots of development is happening everywhere. I would like to address the sewer comment. REIR looks both directions of connecting to the city sewer system or to the Sunny Slope sewer system. I would hope that REIR can move forward through the public comment period while that is working itself out in the different jurisdictions. I don't know why we need to wait to know which direction we're gonna go if REIR contemplates both. And we can just simply move forward with our final EIR with the direction that is verified through the different groups, through the different commissions and boards. I would also like to ask that we spent a lot of time and money putting forth our draft EIR. I don't wanna have to wait one meeting at a time, especially if you guys are gonna just continue with your current meeting schedule. That pushes us out into next year. There's just not enough meetings between now and the end of the year if you only hear one at a time. So I'd like to make sure that everybody on the list can be heard in a timely fashion. We don't wanna just lose our place because there's a lot of things going on. There's a lot of things going on everywhere right now. But again, thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Anthony Batello.
Honorable Chairman and Honorable Board. I first want to compliment the RMA Department. They've handled the Strata Verde application absolutely phenomenally up to this point under circumstances of, of a tremendous amount of work, as what has been demonstrated by Mr. Prado. We would hope that Strata Verde keeps a high priority of process through our SEQA. For now, it is about quality of life. Our project is strictly an economic development project. Means a lot of jobs, a lot of revenue to the county and special districts, potentially. And a lot of community benefits that, once it's approved and, and we start seeing it being realized. So we would hope that we maintain our position as far as a priority. I do pledge that whatever it takes from RN, our team, we're very happy to assist in any way moving our application forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Online, you've been unmuted. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Peter Prowse. I am a representative of the applicant in the Beddable project. I appreciate you accommodating my appearance via Zoom this morning, supervisors. I really wanted to just take this opportunity to thank you for getting this update and for staff for all of their work on this, this project. It really just is a, a use permit application. There is an EIR component that is moving through the, the process. We are working through the issues associated with tribal consultation. I've brought on a, a colleague, Holly Robertson, who's spoken to you before on, on tribal consultation issues, who's an expert in that. And I think we're making, we're making progress in that area. For the client, as you know, 100% of the benefit of this project is for, is for cancer research in honor of his late son, who died four years ago yesterday. For the county, this project would, hopefully, if, if the economic projections that, that we provided to the county are anywhere close to accurate, we would anticipate economic development to the tune of, of more than a million gallons of gas sold each year, plus more than a million dollars in, in retail sales each year, starting with year one. We are looking forward to getting to the end of this process in an expeditious way. And if there's anything that, that we can do to, to move the process along, we are available to do that. Staff has been absolutely fantastic in, in getting their arms around this, working with us, providing the information to us and to the public about where the project is. I can't say enough about, about their hard and diligent work on this. And, and wanna thank them, as well as Mr. Ellen Wood, for, 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 for working with us on this project. So thank you very much.
You've been unmuted. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. This is Bill Lee. I'm one of the project applicants. And I did send an email to all of you prior to this meeting. And I, I, I wanted to ask you to not have to pick projects so much as direct staff to keep them all moving. They may not actually all hit at the same time. Every one of these projects is important and valuable to the community. And obviously, they all have their pros and cons that'll have to be weighed out in a public hearing before they move forward. But the RMA, as you can see, has an awful lot of projects pending before them. And if we only do part of these projects and the RMA's backlog continues, and, you know, they've been short-staffed the last couple of years and gone through a lot of turnover. You know, as much as I'd like to come and say, hey, put mine ahead of others, I, I think the right answer is to just direct staff to keep them all going. And if it's necessary to have an additional meeting, you know, make that available at the time that it, that it's needed in order to get them, you know, on the agenda. Staff has indicated that, you know, they, they are overwhelmed to some degree with work. But I know in the case of my project, I spoke to Ariel Goodspeed this morning before this meeting. And I know that the RMA is currently soliciting bids for some outside help to process mine, so that would alleviate the, the additional stress on, on staff. And of course, that would be paid for by me. On the comment on the sewer, we were told before we spent all the money processing this application and all the money for the environmental impact report, that we would be allowed to contemplate both alternatives in the EIR as long as they were fully evaluated. And if it got to the point where the project was ready to be decided upon, like others, that it could be, you know, it could be, a decision could be made with the condition that, you know, one of those routes that was conditioned in the EIR come to successful fruition. And that's the case with Dividend Homes next door to me. They received a tentative map about three years ago from this very board. And to date, they're in the same pickle on the sewer that Gavin College is and Cielo Vista is, along with my project. And Sunny Slope is working diligently to try to resolve that in the best fashion for the community. If they can't get it into the city plant, they, you know, they will then contemplate putting it into their own plant at Ridge Mark. But one way or another, these, you know, no, no grading permit can be issued, no building permit can be issued on any project until it has utilities. So I, I would respectfully request that you guys direct staff to keep all these projects moving and use outside.
You've been unmuted. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Mary Shaw Coron. The reason I'm speaking today, well, first of all, I wanna thank Abraham Prado for doing a great job. That was really helpful. I had been reaching out to Stan Ketchum regarding the status of several draft EIRs. And I was not getting a response, so I really appreciate the information he provided. It's very helpful. My sense, however, is that things are being rushed. I was really surprised to see, for example, the landfill expansion project. I mean, this is a huge project, five-fold expansion. And it looks like everyone's trying to push to get this approved by October 25th. And normally, this type of project would take a lot longer. I really am concerned about the rushing. I also wanted to address the, I think it's the Traveler's Center that's on Highway 129 node. That one should not have a negative declaration. I remember when we were told, this is during the Measure K referendum. You know, voters basically voted against. you know, voters basically voted against all these developments on Highway 101. I remember Anthony Batello promising that even though there was no EIR done on the Highway 101 nodes, that there would be an EIR done at the project level before permits were granted. And so now, this is totally being reversed for the 129 node. There should be an EIR done. So she sends voters vote against this. So I wanted to mention that as well as the fact that I do not think it is helpful to rush. There are so many different projects. There's a lot going on. I really think you should be weighing consideration, especially for the residential developments, the issue of water, which we had just heard about earlier today. That's a big issue, as well as, of course, transportation, traffic, et cetera. So I do urge all of you to not rush and to also take the time on the Travelers Center to allow a EIR and rather than to do a negative declaration. Thank you so much for your time.
You've been unmuted. Please state your name. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jackie Morris Lopez. I live in District Two. Colin Kosmicki is my supervisor. And I'm speaking to the issue of the Betabell Node and also Stradiverte, since that is in my district. And I, just like the last speaker, agree that it feels like there's a huge rush. And you actually were being requested to rush these through. I think projects of this nature that are this large and have an impact in an area that does have impact. And I don't agree that the 129 node should be a negative impact. If you live in the area, which I do and do often commute on 129 and 101 interchange there, it's a four-way stop, stop signs where there are semi-trucks that are coming back and forth to Taylor Farms and Earthbound, used to be Earthbound, and also other areas in the valley, in the ag industry. And I think that you would be a blind person to state that there's a negative declaration. And as far as the Stradiverte, there was a unanimous vote to reject this project. And yet again, you're coming back to a conditional use permit. And also with the Betabell Node, I really question the premise that this is going to go 100% to charity. You know, I just, you know, we voted no on that as well. And once again, it's coming back for your purview to approve of these projects. There is also such a bill as Senate Bill 18, which involves any project along with SEQA, EIR, to have a conversation with a tribal council with indigenous peoples in these lands that are archeological, rich in nature. And once again, the voters have been rejected with our unanimous votes. And I really question the projection for all of this tax revenue that they're stating that will bring into our county. I don't understand if they've done studies on projects that have yet to be built. I don't understand the math. It's not very clear to me. And I think that, you know, these type of projects, number one, were rejected. Number two, if they're going to this level again, need to have adequate time to be reviewed adequately. Thank you.
No other comments.
Bringing it back to the Board. Supervisor Tiffany, I know you had some questions.
Yeah, thank you, Abraham. And the presentation really clearly lays everything out. I understand the concern you have, but my inclination is to, you know, just let things play themselves out under the normal course of the way things go. I would say that I don't see any of these being rushed. In fact, it's ironic that the landfill was mentioned as being rushed and yet the time for the EIR has been very extensive. And because I know they want it to be extremely thorough. So I would push back hard about any of these projects being rushed. But anyway, my question is, like I said, I prefer to see it just play itself out under normal course of business. You do have the ability, and a couple of speakers mentioned this, to use outside counsel, use outside planning sources. I know you already do. And so I'm just curious, if you do do that, I'm assuming you will, does that give you the ability to, you know, move forward without giving you, you know, priorities? And how does that, you know, play out? And then also, I'm just curious, is if necessary, would you come to us and make a request for additional supervisors' meetings?
Absolutely. Thank you, Supervisor Tiffany. That's great questions. And you are correct, we do have the ability to have outside counsel and have agencies help out, provide us professional services in regards to the projects that we are working on with the understanding that the applicant is the one who will be paying for that extra additional fees to have those services provided to help with the completion of the environmental reports. And absolutely, if desired, if it does happen that some of these projects do bunch up in one, any given meeting, regular meeting, we can definitely, we should be able to know a little bit ahead of time where we can reach out to the Board and let the Board know and see if, you know, you're willing to do an extra meeting. I know that we're going to be coming to the Planning Commission in a very similar fashion because they only meet once a month. However, in the two months that I've been here, they've already had two special meetings. So I know that they're very amenable, and I know you are as well. So yeah, we can definitely come back to you as we know a little bit more details in regards to when these projects are going to come before you. And if they do bundle up, we can certainly make those requests.
Supervisor.
Thank you. I have to be adamant in this, in that we need to follow the process. It's first come, first served. I really appreciate all of the information. I think it's important for the public to see where we're at with things. I think it's great to have some projections. However, we don't have a crystal ball. And I feel like it's not advantageous for anything for us to say, this is when this is going to happen. This is when that's going to happen. And I don't, we need to follow the process. We have a process for a reason. And people need to, you know, have their plans addressed in the order in which they were received. That is my very strong stand that I'm taking on this. I really don't think that it's our job as supervisors to prioritize what's happening in the Planning Department. I think that we need to really make sure that we are following the process and that I have full faith in your department in making sure that you guys are prioritizing things in the way in which they appeared inside your office. And some things are going to move through processes faster than others. So they may naturally outweigh when we see things and where we see things. So I think that that's the way we have to go. I think we have to follow the natural flow of the work and address things as they appear. And if we have to have special meetings, we'll have special meetings. That's just how strongly I feel about it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to follow up, if we followed a first-come, first-serve model, what would be first? What would be at the top of the list?
Oh, that's a great question, Vice Chair Kosmicki. So at the top of the list would be those, that individual development that completes its environmental process. And by that, I mean, and you're absolutely right, Supervisor Dirks, in that, you know, when we are processing an application, we can only project it, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we know, that we have a crystal ball. We know exactly that it's going to come before you on the day. Because there can be, for example, once we release our draft environmental impact report for public comment to not only the public, but all of our responsible agencies, the Water Resources Association being one of them, and we get all of these comments back, it may be that there are some hefty, big, I mean, we see normally multiple page of comments that we have to, by law, respond to. And that makes it part of the final EIR. So it may be that in the response process of some of them, even though one of them came before the other originally when it was submitted, because of the response time that it may take us as staff to reply to all of these comments, another one may kind of overpass.
Sure, sure. So what's at the top?
So currently, right now, at the very top is the Traveler Station. That's the one that's projected to be coming before a public hearing first. And then we have Lands of Lee, John Smith, Betabell, pretty much tied for second, which is kind of why we brought it before you to say, hey, if it comes all in one day, then we want to see what would be your preference to come first, if desired. And then after that, we have Ridge Mark, and then at the last, at the end, we have Stradiverte.
Okay. And so I had requested a list of current development projects at a prior meeting. I guess that's morphed into this discussion about priorities. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes, in regards to the projects, these are the major projects.
So I was just curious, and I'm, you know, I've talked to CIO about this, and you're new, so this is not a criticism. I would just like to see going forward, anytime we mention a housing project, that we definitely should have the number of units attached to it. What is the number of units? What kind of housing are we talking about? Perhaps what affordable housing might be? I just think that for transparency's sake, that would be helpful. So the Ridge Mark 190, that's, I don't believe I've seen that to this point. That's a new, relatively new project. You know, as far as I know, the Ridge Mark, and then Lee is 141, 166, if you include the ADU potential. What about Spring Meadows and James Bray?
Those are good questions. And absolutely, the map that I showed you on the second slide, that's a work in progress. And we're hoping to have an Excel sheet that essentially has a numbered Excel sheet that corresponds to the map. And we'll have all those details, project contact, name and number, number of units approved, what's been.
So you don't have a number offhand of Spring Meadows, James Bray?
For the Spring Meadows, yeah. For that one, those are on hold right now. Because the Bray is, I don't have a number on that. The Spring Meadows, I believe it was 40 units. But what happened there is that it's in the sphere of influence. And so therefore, they were trying to get out-of-jurisdiction sewers, sewer water service from the city, but the city rejected it. So the applicant just put it on hold.
Okay, I'm going to cut to the chase on this question. How much does the Growth Initiative play into this discussion about priorities?
The Growth Initiative?
The Growth Initiative on the November ballot.
Honestly, Vice Chair Kosmicki, that's in all of our minds, and that's in the minds of the developers as well. I'm assuming that they would want to make sure that they are, you know, before the Board or before the Planning Commission at, you know, hopefully before that. But it is not our responsibility to rush things and make them before. Our responsibility is to make sure that we prepare each report as required and present the facts to the public, to the Planning Commission, the Board of Supervisors, and have the supervisors and Planning Commission make those.
Okay, and I just, few brief comments. I think we should work through the normal process with all these projects. And we were already on track, for instance, to finish the landfill consideration this year. So I don't see any reason to halt that potential. It's a priority. We're going to get the EIR relatively soon, and there's a 45-day period. And so my understanding is that's somewhere in the late summer/fall potential. Outside of that, though, I don't see any logical reason to prioritize any housing projects, to rush through any housing projects. It shouldn't matter, you know, the November timeline. I just, you know, we've all sat up here and talked about, single-family housing shouldn't be a priority. So now we have the opportunity to show, you know, put the proof with the pudding there. Because, you know, if we're up here prioritizing housing projects, then we're contradicting what all of us have said in the past about that. So I wouldn't, don't want to see any housing projects prioritized personally, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Supervisor Tiffany?
Yeah, I pretty much already said my say. I think we should just let things play out. I mean, I would personally like to see the landfill project get decided on by this current Board. But I, you know, I think it needs to play out like everything else. And the only reason I make that comment about this Board is I think that's a very involved decision. And there will be a learning curve for a new Board. So personally, I'd like to see that, you know, be a priority. But I would not, with that being said, I would not, you know, have you, you know, artificially prioritize anything over anything else. Let it play itself out. And it sounds like Supervisor Dirks and Supervisor Kosmicki feel the same way. So thank you.
Supervisor Gonzalez?
I would echo the sentiments of what the Board's already said, too, is allow the projects to play out. Don't give anyone any particular preference, but give them their opportunity to be heard, you know, according to the schedule, wherever their application is at the time. I personally would be open to having as many extra special meetings as we needed to accommodate these requests. But I am not reluctant to not take more than one major project in a meeting. I'm very open to that. We made a promise up here this morning that we wanted to be a proactive Board. We want to get as much done. And I want to make sure that we stay in that mindset for the duration of the year. So no delays on my part.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abraham, for that presentation. My only comments is, if you need help, I personally think we should do what we can to support the RMA Department. I think it serves a function as an economic development agency. And we've spoken that as a Board here, you know. I don't think that puts you in a position to have to make decisions for us. I think it just puts you in the driver's seat to let the process, as it legally states anyways, to play out. But giving you the ability to manage resources right in a way that's more efficient, like I stated in my beginning statement. So I support the will of the Board, and those are my only comments. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So we'll be going to closed session, one hour.
Okay. So a one-hour closed session, that's.
Go ahead and.
Oh, we have four items, that's right.
You'll need to.
So I can refer to County Council, please?
I have to flip to my script here. So we have closed session, conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. The number of cases are four. The first one is, and these will not necessarily be in the order they're considered in closed session, but the first one on the list is the County of San Benito versus Arson Devizes of Carl Ladd, Superior Court of California County, the San Benito, case number CU 21-00146. The next one is the case of Jean Oller versus County of San Benito, Superior Court of California County of San Benito, case number CU 21-00039. The third is PLH Vineyard Sky LLC versus County of San Benito, Superior Court of California County of San Benito, case number CU 22-00010. And the last is Western Resources Legal Center versus County of San Benito, San Benito County Superior Court, case number CU 21-00204.
Okay, so we go to closed session, 12:18. So we'll come back at 1:18.
Public comment.
Oh, public comment.
Thank you.
Comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon. No comments.
Thank you. We'll come back at 1:18.
All right, we're back at 1:21 from closed session. Do we have any reporting out, County Council?
Yes, thank you. On, let me take the one, no reportable action on.
Oh, sorry, we're still muted, I guess, from CMAP? Technical difficulties? We're ready? Okay, County Council, go ahead.
All right, we reconvened in the afternoon session then, and after closed session, there are no reportable actions on three of the cases listed. The Aller, PLH Vineyard, Sky, and Western Resources Legal Center cases. I'd like to call upon Deputy County Council Council Shirley Murphy to address the Ayers of Lad case and the action to be taken by the board on that matter. Mic, microphone.
Microphone, please.
Oh, sorry. In the case of County of San Benito versus the Ayers and Deveses of Carl Lad et al., Superior Court of California, County of San Benito, case number CU-21-00146, the board met in closed session to consider a proposed stipulation for entry of judgment and condemnation and found it acceptable to the county, but we need to have an official vote on the record to approve the stipulation for entry of judgment and condemnation and authorize the chair to sign it.
Can I get a motion from the board?
So moved.
I'll second.
A quick question before we vote. Can we clarify the dollar amounts of the public's aware we're not talking what we're talking about here? Is that?
Yeah, well, do you want to know for each person or just the total?
The total, please.
The total is $2,500.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification, Sirois or Cosmiki. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Five zero, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto item number six, accept informational presentation, report on the zoning code update.
Excuse me, Ariel, are you going to introduce this matter, please? Thank you.
Hi, Ariel Gutspeed, Principal Planner with the Planning Department of San Benito County. Thank you so much for letting us come and basically kind of do a pre-presentation before we bring it for adoption at our next hearing. We really wanted to give the board an opportunity to see what we've gotten to so far, what the Planning Commission has, you know, pushed forward and to get your guys' feedback and incorporate that feedback prior to bringing it for final adoption. And so Eric Norris, our consultant with Interwest, who's been on this journey with us for about a year and a half, is going to provide the presentation today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ariel. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Eric Norris with Interwest, and give you a quick presentation, and then we'll go through this page by page in a few minutes.
Nice.
Only kidding, we'll do that in two weeks. Before I start, I just want to say, I know you've heard many times, but you do have a great staff. Ariel and the other folks we've worked with in planning have been enormously helpful to us, helping identify what needed to get fixed in the code, reading things and getting back to us with comments. So they've been just so helpful in getting to this point. Your Planning Commission as well did some really super work on this. They read the whole thing. They gave us some comments, which are in the code before you, that I'll tell you about in a second, but we've just had a really great working experience here. So let's talk about the code. So we've been updating the zoning code for about the last year and a half, and first question that comes up is, well, why are we doing this? First of all, I'd mentioned that we're doing this in part because the county got a grant from the state to ally to do this work. But in terms of what needed to get done, first of all, the code is almost 40 years old. It'll be 40 years old in two years. So it was about time to go through and just kind of give it a, not just a sprucing up, but an entire redo, which is what we've really done. We've tried to make the code more clear and concise, more user-friendly, so it's going to be easier for your staff, the development community, the public, to pick it up and find the information that they need. It's a little bit difficult in a number of cases right now. We've taken the opportunity now to implement your new general plan from 2015. So your old code, your current code predates the general plan, so your code now implements your new general plan. We've really made an effort to streamline approvals and to push down as far as we can to a staff level a number of things that get done on a regular basis by the development community and the ag community here in the county. There were a number of things in your current code that required either hearings or Planning Commission meetings to get done that, in talking with your staff, didn't really need to go to that level. So we've really tried to push that approval process down as far as we can. And finally, we wanted to comply with changes in state law. Sacramento keeps throwing new stuff at cities and counties every year, so we'll at least bring you up to speed with what you need to do as of this year. So in terms of what we've done, we've reorganized the code. We've taken all the similar ideas in the code and grouped them together. They were kind of split up a little bit in different places, depending on what that was. We've done things like putting in tables, and I'll show you an example of what those are, for permitted uses and development standards. So one thing it'll do is it makes it easier to compare across zones, like where can I do something? Where do I need a use permit? Where is something permitted? And so on. We revised and simplified the permitted and conditional uses, and those are those lists of uses. When you go into the zoning code and you say, I'm in the whatever zone, what can I do there? Is this permitted? Is it conditional? Is it prohibited? We've really taken that list, and older codes did this a lot. They had a really long encyclopedic list of everything under the sun and then a statement about whether you could do it or not. You don't really need to do that. You can do that in a much simpler way, which we've done. We've definitely, as I mentioned, streamlined the review and approval of agricultural uses. One example of that is something that your Planning Commission asked us to do. We've broken out now the kinds of new buildings, in particular agricultural accessory buildings, like barns and so on, and whether they can be done just at a staff level or whether they require some kind of discretionary approval. We bumped up the size of those. You can now, with this code, build a 25,000-square-foot ag building with only staff approval. And that was something the Planning Commission felt really strongly about. That's going to capture a lot of the buildings that the ag community is going to put up on a regular basis. Things bigger than that go into a slightly higher level of review, but by and large, the ag community is going to be able to come in to the planning department with plans for, you know, a 20,000, 25,000-square-foot building and get those approved at a staff level. And finally, we're dealing with new issues that have arisen since the code was updated comprehensively, like as I said, some four years ago. We've also eliminated some types of permits that were seldom or never used. There were a few in there that we read through and we said, what does this do? And how often do you use it? And nobody had ever used or done those particular kinds of permits. So we said, well, we probably don't need them, so we took them out of the code. We've added some sections. As I mentioned, we're bringing you up to speed with state law. There are a few sections in here now that you have to address. Inclusionary housing, well, actually not inclusionary housing, reasonable accommodation, a few others that you had to have in there. And we've also done something that we try to do in all the codes that we work on, which is to add illustrations to show things rather than just tell. You know, I can write about something for a page and a half, but I can show you in a picture, and you'll get a much clearer idea a lot in much shorter time. Just an example, here's an illustration of where the setbacks are on a typical lot. Or here, where you can put different fence heights, how you measure a deck height. You know, I could talk to you about this for 10 minutes, but there's an illustration here that shows you that. And this is not only for your staff, as I mentioned, it's for the public, because a lot of these things in here are things that somebody out there, just, you know, a regular homeowner, is going to ask questions about. How high can my deck be? How high can a fence be? We've tried to make it easy to find those answers. Couple other examples, a breezeway is something that commonly comes up. We can define it, and we do, in words, but we also show a photograph here to show what that is. It's that thing that connects two buildings. An efficiency kitchen is something that comes up a lot when we're talking about accessory dwelling units, and here's a picture of what one of those looks like. Here's just a really quick example of one of those land use tables. So what we've done here in this example is we've taken the agricultural zones, and we're just showing, reading from left to right, whatever that land use is and whether it's allowed or conditionally permitted or whatever in the various different zoning districts. Without having to, currently, you'd have to go from one zone 10 or 20 pages ahead in the code to the next zone and look it up and look up the same thing. Makes it a lot easier to use. In terms of permitted and conditional uses, a few things just to highlight. We've expanded the definition of commercial agriculture a lot to really include all the things that is commercial agriculture. So when we say the commercial agriculture is permitted in a zone, it allows the full range of things that commercial agriculture is, because there were questions that would come up in the current code. Is that just the growing of crops? Is it just the raising of animals? We've expanded that now to include, well, yes, it's those things, but it's also the maintenance of the vehicles that you use on your farm. It's not maintaining your neighbor's vehicles, but it's maintaining your equipment. So we're just trying to make sure that there's as few questions as possible, again, focusing on the ag industry, that when they're running their operations in a normal way, that they're within what this code allows. Wineries are now allowed with an administrative use permit, which is a staff-level approval, in the ag and rural zones. We didn't try to see where those were going to go. There was some discussion early on about, do we want to designate areas where wineries should go? We just, we said, well, no, we'll let the winemakers decide that. But when they do, if they're in an ag or rural zone, they can come in and get a staff-level permit to operate that winery. And the operation of the winery includes the things that wineries typically want to do now, like have events and weddings and tasting rooms and so on, being able to sell food. So all those things are now captured under the definition of what a winery is, and the permit to get that winery is easier to get. Ariel's been working with you on home occupations and rural home enterprises. That's all folded into this new code. And then just in that same vein of simplifying things, light industry and heavy industry are now just some general categories without listing every single product that you can make in a light industrial zone. Some of those processes that we've changed in the permit requirements, lot-line adjustments have been taken out of this code. They now reside over in the Public Works Department, which is where they should, because they're just a very simple process. Nonconforming parcel review, in case you're wondering, that's the thing that nobody had ever done in the last 20 years or so, so that's gone. Your current code has a whole chapter on animal keeping regulations. Doesn't need to be here, because it's already addressed elsewhere in your code, which is where it should be. And then noise standards, again, your county code has another chapter on noise, and your general plan has noise standards, so we didn't see the need to replicate those a third way in this code. In terms of adding things, excuse me, to comply with state law, obviously accessory dwelling units, those laws are changing all the time, so you're up to date now with the latest in state law. Transitional housing, farmer-keeper housing are some things that the state has said you have to address in a certain way now, so we have. We've added objective design standards for multifamily, because state law now allows you, if you come in with a certain kind of multifamily product, you have to do a staff-level review, but if you have objective design standards, you can apply those. So we've given you those standards to ensure that when you get that kind of project in, it will have an acceptable level of design and quality, but it's all objective. It's all measurable. Anybody looking at those standards should reach the same conclusion about whether that project complies. And I mentioned reasonable accommodation, which is something that occurs from time to time when a person generally with a physical disability needs some kind of relief from the standards of the zoning code in order to be able to live their lives. And when we went to the Planning Commission, they did have some requests for us. One was to increase the size of agricultural buildings, which we did. As I mentioned, that's now up to 25,000 square feet. They asked, they also asked about a couple of other things. They said, what about food trucks? Food trucks are happening all over the county, so we've written you some standards that make that a legal activity now and captures, not the food truck that would go, for instance, from place to place, like construction site to construction site during the day, but the kind we're starting to see now, where, again, maybe a winery or some other use wants to have a food truck come be there for part of the day or part of the year. You now have standards to allow that to happen. And we added standards for tiny homes on wheels. That's something that's happening across the state. There's really two kinds of tiny homes. We talked about this with the Planning Commission. One is just a very small home, if it's built on a foundation. It's not really a tiny home, as we think of it. But the tiny home on wheels is a thing that you've probably seen on television, where they, you know, they, a number of different TV series that address those, where they're literally built on a chassis and can be towed. That's something that's not addressed in your current code. You could not live in a tiny home on wheels, because it, in your current code, would be just defined as a vehicle or a trailer. So we've written standards that allow that to happen and would allow something like is shown on the screen here to be placed on a residential lot. So we were in front of the Planning Commission, as I mentioned, on June the 1st. They voted four to zero to recommend that you adopt the updated code. We'll be back here in two weeks. Obviously, we're happy to answer any questions you have today, but we'll be back here in two weeks to maybe spend a little bit more time, once you've had a chance to look through the code, if you have any questions. Obviously, between now and then, you can reach out to Ariel. She can get in touch with me. We'll be happy to get on the phone with you or get on a Zoom call and talk about anything in the code. And that completes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have today.
Before we go to the board, if we can see, get public comment?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comments.
Back to the board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, I did read this zoning code, and it was quite a read, so appreciate all the work. I thought, I think it was a really fine job, and it does, it is very clear and does a good job of laying the stipulations out in a way that's readable, and I think there's a lack of ambiguity, and so, good job on that.
Good, thank you.
I had said some questions, so maybe some of it is more content-based as opposed to, you know, the layout or the presentation. So some of these questions might be more staff-oriented. I was wondering, minor subdivisions being designated as 10 or fewer units, is that a discretionary number? Is that a standard sort of a thing elsewhere?
It's part of the subdivision map act, so four or fewer parcels are considered a minor subdivision. Five or more is considered a major subdivision.
So we're going above that, basically, in our code? Or wait, what was the?
We go by state law, so four or fewer is a minor subdivision.
I thought it said 10 units. I thought it said ten units or more is a major, up to nine is a minor, what I read.
Well, I think we may be talking about how you process subdivisions. And so anything up to four is a parcel map, which is different from a tract map. Tract maps have a greater set of requirements on them. So I think what we're doing in this code is saying a tract map up to ten is a minor subdivision and above that is a major subdivision.
Okay. But as long as we're following state standards, state law, is that what you're saying? We're not, we're not deviating from that essentially?
No, I don't think we've made any changes.
See Abraham shaking his head? Okay.
If, if I may, the zoning code is one part of the code. The subdivision code is a separate part of the code, and subdivisions are dealt with primarily in the, in the subdivision part of the ordinance. I'm not sure what the cross-reference is in this particular case, since I haven't memorized either the old code or the new one, so.
Okay. Food, food trucks on page thirteen in the permits document, it says they're exempt from permitting. I was wondering, and I'm good with this, I think it's great, we should be encouraging, you know, entrepreneurship and not punishing people that are trying to get by. But I'm wondering if there's consideration, has there ever been talks of maybe designating safe areas? Because one of the things that I've noticed with some of the food trucks is that they might be pulled off, like the side, like, for instance, one fifty-six in Union, there's often a food truck out, out there, not, not off to the frontage, but actually right off one fifty-six. And so I'm wondering if that's something that could potentially be incorporated, that we're good with the food trucks, but they should be a certain distance off, off of roads? Or maybe they're, they can't be right off of a state highway. I don't know. So that's something that, just a thought, maybe that's more of a statement than a question. And then permits and other actions, the document permits and other actions, page two says the planning director has broad discretion to redesignate exempt projects as minor or major subdivisions? That seems like a pretty broad level of discretion to me. Am I missing something there?
Well, I'm, I'm used to seeing that kind of provision.
Okay.
As a planning director, there are often things that I would come across where I'd say, I could do this at a staff level, but it's, for whatever reason, controversial enough, or potentially controversial enough, that I want this to go to the planning commission and actually have a hearing.
But it's exempt by the books, right? It's exempt according to the rules?
It would be, right, it would be a staff level approval, something I could do as, you know, as a director. But in some cases, I just like as a director to have the ability to say, no, planning commission, you look at that. It, it's potentially controversial enough for, for whatever reason, just because of the particulars of the project, even though normally it would just go through.
Well, maybe that's something for the board to mull over between now and two weeks. Does it just, there's a few of these that I thought were interesting. Under, there's an administrative use permit for hotels and motels on agricultural lands on the zoning, zoning map document, page seven. So they can just sign off on a hotel motel if it's an ag property? And if so, that's, that, to me, needs, to me, that's troubling. You know, we had, there can be controversies that come up. Trace Pinos comes to mind about fifteen years ago, and, and I thought that hotel was a great idea personally, but there was a lot of controversy around it. So what I'm reading is that the planning director can just sign off on a hotel motel development anywhere on ag land. Is that correct, according to the code?
I think you're looking at that correctly.
Yeah. I personally would like that changed. And then landscaping, well, actually, no, this one, this one threw me off. I'm a, and maybe I just read this wrong, but single-family residential districts on page eighteen of the zoning map, it mentions twenty units per acre are allowed? Is that a missed, is that a typo?
Depends on the zoning district.
Twenty units per acre? A single-family homes? Can you fit twenty homes on an acre?
Now, with the density requirements, I'm, I'm not sure, but.
It's on page eighteen of the zoning map document. I thought it might have been a typo, to be honest.
Okay. Yeah, the issue there is that the single-family zone also allows attached product. It's not only single-family homes. So.
So like an ADU?
No, ADUs don't count.
But single-family zoning is just single-family homes, is my understanding. If it's under single-family zoning?
Well, there's a couple of things you can do there. You can do, you can do a single-family dwelling as a primary. You can do additional single-family dwelling units, provided they meet the density requirements. You can do accessory dwellings, but they don't count toward that density number. You can do group homes. But, yeah, if you're doing twenty per acre.
These are all tiny homes?
Well, they could be tiny homes. I mean, if you're doing a, if we're just thinking of these as a detached unit.
Maybe it's just worth looking at and brand.
Yeah, we could take that number down a little bit.
It jumped out for me.
Yeah.
Then landscaping, just to go back to that prior drought discussion, design standards to minimize water use in, in what I see is basically perpetual drought conditions that we're in. And it says, we'll, we'll follow state water efficiency standards. I know it's a big topic that I brought up earlier about lawns. I just, maybe not for the approval of the zoning code, but that's something that we might want to discuss how we can be bold on, you know, minimizing water usage in future developments. And I'm not so sure that, you know, just following the state efficiency standards is quite enough for me personally. I think we should maybe take a hard look at what else we can do. Maybe there's more in the toolbox if it's not banning lawns altogether, because we were just told landscaping makes up a large portion of the, the water usage, then we should be responding to that. And, and, you know, being as responsible as we can going forward. We just heard that we're going to have to double our water usage in the next twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five years, and that's a real daunting outlook for me. So whatever we can do to maybe improve that, up, up to including, to me, you know, potentially looking at whether lawns should be, really should be included. I think that's the future of California personally, and we've seen some, you know, we've seen some snippets of that with some things that the governor has enacted and such in the last year or two. But, but just, I think we should maybe get a little more serious there. And then the big one, and the one that I brought up previously, and I appreciate Ariel, you know, mentioning that we're going to be discussing this aspect, and it'll be part of the zoning code, is the planning commission authority level, page three and six, under the, the initial document, the general plan provisions document, and then page thirteen. There's a few different sections where it's addressed. For me personally, I, I think we have to have a really serious discussion about whether the planning commission should be an advisory board only. And, and I think that we do need a level of education. We're all, a lot of us are new board members here, and we're going to have more new board members next year. And I think it's really important for us to truly understand what level of authority the planning commission has. I think I have an understanding at this point, after delving into it recently, but I personally believe that the planning commission should be an advisory board only. I don't, you know, they're not elected, they're not held accountable by the voters, and I think it's played into a decent amount of the stuff that's going on in this county in the last several decades, where the planning commission makes a decision, and then the elected officials say, well, we didn't have a choice, the planning commission made that decision. Well, you do have a choice when you're deciding in the zoning code whether the planning commission should have that level of authority. And I believe that the elected officials should be the ones that make the ultimate decisions when it comes to all planning, major project planning decisions in the county, personally. And that's, so I would like to, I don't know if I need to do that as a future item, because I know that's something, that's not just something you just, you know, type change in the zoning code. That's going to, if, if there is interest from any other board members, it's something that would require a decent amount of debate, I would assume. And I don't know if other board members have feelings on that at this point, but, and I would invite, you know, as long as I brought that up, if anybody has thoughts.
If you're, if you're asking for feelings about it, and I know you have the floor, but we are a general law county, and because of it, the planning commission, it's an authority, is a requirement. And so to try to take away any authority would be, would be contrary to, to going against the premise of the general law authority, so.
But, but then, us as elected officials have to be willing to be, to take the accountability when something is approved by the planning commission.
And we do, when we, when we appoint our planning commissioners, each one of us has that authority to pick the candidate who we think will best, will best serve our interests. And so I think it's already being taken care of in that process. And I am not interested in, in taking away any of the authority from the planning commission.
But they make decisions that are essentially binding decisions. Some of their decisions are essentially binding decisions. And so I would like to, if, I see, you know, Supervisor Gonzalez is not interested in that, but I'm wondering if there's at least somebody else that's willing to have that discussion about how much authority, it might not be taking all of it away, but at least taking a look at the different, because there are layers to this when you go through the zoning code. There's four or five, maybe, areas where the planning commission has really ultimate authority. There can be appeals, but that is another layer. I, you know, and County Council Barbara Thompson has said, some counties don't even have planning commissions. Some have planning commissions that are simply advisory. And I personally, I would like, I prefer to have them as an advisory board, because I want to be held accountable for all the decisions that are made when it comes to development projects.
Supervisor, Cosmickey, yeah, so I think it's going to require a thorough conversation, but I'd like to hear Supervisor Tiffany's comments.
I would be very uncomfortable making that kind of a change. I mean, this is something that the planning commission's been around for years. It's the way that not just our county, but most counties operate. I, I hear what you're saying, Supervisor Cosmickey, but I would, I personally wouldn't support making that change. I think I'd, I'd be interested here in getting more educated as far as, you know, what their role is. In fact, getting more educated on all these different terminologies, you know, conditional use, and, you know, there's a lot of things. I mean, we are a new board. That I would definitely support, but the idea of suddenly, and, and I agree, Supervisor Gonzalez said, we do appoint planning commissioners. I understand they're not elected, but nevertheless, they, you know, they, if we do our job properly and we have a fair representation of the people in the community, just because they're not elected doesn't mean they don't do a good job. And I, I'm uncomfortable shifting all that and put all the power to the, to the board.
And I'm not expect, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Supervisor Dirks?
I relinquish the floor.
Okay, thank you. So my comments are similar to Supervisor Tiffany and Supervisor Gonzalez. I, I do feel like this process is in place for a reason, and I think it is to distribute some of the allocation of, I don't know, power or responsibility. And I do feel like it's there for a play, for a reason. I too, and would support the education piece of it. I think it's important for our community to know and understand the process of the planning commission and all of this as well. And I'm, it's my hope that with the forty-year revision of the code, that it will also be much clearer to the planning commissioners as well, as to, to where the direction of things go. But I, I support the idea of the education piece of it. I am not comfortable at this time trying to take away some of their decisive abilities, though.
Okay. Okay. So if there's no further?
Oh, I just got a couple more. I was relinquishing the floor on those. I have questions. The, the administrative, and this is the last one, Mr. Chair, the administrative permits, section twenty-five point oh-two, it says, I'm wondering what constitutes, no, actually, I think we answered that with the five. I was going to go back to the five and the ten on the minor development planning degree. But those are my main, those are my main questions. I will just say, just in summary on the planning commission thing, obviously, I'm not going to get support on that. I would, I wouldn't, I would encourage you guys to be a little more open-minded, though, and, you know, we haven't even had a discussion about it. All I was asking for is a discussion. And I think you'd be surprised at the level of authority that the planning commission has. And I had one person apply to be planning commissioner, one, when we put it out there last time around. I had, I did ask around a lot, I did my due diligence. A lot of people just don't want to do it. It's relatively volunteer work. But it does leave open that possibility. We get a lot of pressure up here as elected officials from developers. And all they have to do in some of these cases is go pressure those guys that aren't held, those men and women that aren't held accountable on the planning commission. And as I've been told as of recent, there's a reason why there are a bunch of Mercedes-Benzes and BMWs outside of this room during those planning commission meetings. Thank you very much.
I would respectfully disagree. I actually found someone that had a law degree, because I wanted someone to be capable on that board to represent me, and so I disagree with your comment.
We're not done. Supervisor Tiffany, go ahead.
Mr. Chair?
I just want to move on, I think.
I have a question, a very specific question. And I don't know if this is for you or for Ariel, but under, and I think this falls under the temporary event permits, twenty-five oh-two oh-oh-five. There was a, last year, and I think Ariel, I brought this up before, although I was really, back then, dealing with Robin primarily. But there, we, we had a situation, and I don't think this is a one-time deal, but situation where in South County, there's, there's, I think it was called the lazy bum, you know, that, you know. And they ultimately pulled out because they felt like they were, we were imposing too many conditions on them. I, you know, I don't know if I agree or disagree with them, but I guess my question is, is when we're looking at the, the zoning, are we making any changes in that area? And what I don't want to do, and I, I think they were getting hung up with, you know, we were, we were saying that because of the endangered species and things like that, we had to do, you know, have someone come on board, do an evaluation, et cetera. And, you know, I was getting pushed back, not just from them, but from others that were saying in other counties, they're no, nowhere near as, you know, onerous in terms of getting a permit. And so this event, you know, went away, basically. And, you know, generally, I want to be encouraging to us, you know, having temporary tourism events and things like that. This is a kind of event that brings people in from out of the county. It sounded like a positive thing. So I don't know if there's a middle ground, but, but anyway, it's a question there, very, I know it's very specific, but I don't know if there's a way we can address it and, and make it a little bit easier to get through on the process.
So the question is, is how, how do we simplify the process?
Yeah, and I, you know, I don't know. It's just, you know, Robin was telling me that basically this is the law, California state law, and we have to follow it. And, you know, I guess other counties, maybe they just ignore it. I don't know. That's not a policy decision we can make, of course, is to ignore California law. But anyway, I have a question about that.
You know, we did spend a good amount of time going through our temporary events and, you know, and temporary use permits. I know we did have in mind, you know, kind of expanding, you know, coming up with, you know, how long we could have, you know, events and, and things. So, I mean, at our next meeting on the twenty-eighth, we could maybe do a comparison of current to new and kind of go through that in more detail to see, you know, specifically how we expand it, or, you know, how it changed, and, and then, and then the level of, you know, review, what, you know, what's done, you know, by planning director approval to going to planning commission, so. But I, we did spend some time on it.
Yeah, and I would have you look at section G in there, under exempt temporary events. We've expanded that list of the things that clearly don't need a temporary event permit. One that we added in particular, well, a couple, if I'm doing a promotional event or a grand opening celebration in an established shopping center, and I'm not interfering with traffic, et cetera, I don't need a temporary event permit. I mean, as a planning director, I usually try and get myself out of the business of looking at these, because it just takes up all your time.
Well, I think, I think one issue in, you know, this is a rural county, or at least parts of it are very rural.
Yeah.
And so you, unlike other counties, you get into, I mean, the district I represent is a huge amount of just wide open space.
Right.
And so you have, there are different kinds of events that, you know, the, the exemption here are more for things that, you know, I think of being, maybe with the exception of the, the weddings, parties, but more, you know, within suburbia and stuff like that. Whereas what I'm talking about is something that, you know, is off, you know, off-road events or off-road vehicle events, that kind of thing, in very rural settings. events or off-road vehicle events, that kind of thing, in very rural settings.
Yeah.
Where they, they come in for a long weekend, once a year, kind of a thing. And anyway, they, again, I'm not sure what the answer is, but I was hoping that maybe we would try to address it to make it a little bit easier for these events to take place.
Okay, yeah, we'll take a look at that with Ariel and her staff. The other exemption, just really quickly, though, is we've exempted, it says uses or events which are consistent with the clearly intended use of the facility. So a sporting event at a stadium, a play in a theater, clearly doesn't need a temporary event permit. So if you're doing that, that event at an off-road vehicle park, don't need a temporary event permit. But if I wanted to go out just into the hills and bring in a few hundred or thousand people and run my off-road weekend, that's the kind of thing you want to discuss. Would you want to have some kind of review over that?
Yeah.
So that's discretionary is what you're saying?
It would require a temporary event permit, and those are done at a staff level.
Wow.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting we don't have a review. I think there probably does need to be a review, but then what the requirements would be by, you know, administratively. Again, I think part of it, and maybe Ariel, we can talk about it separately outside of the meeting, but I think it got into, like I said, some of the endangered species and other things like that. And then, and that's where it got really expensive for them. So, and there may not be any way around that, but.
That is hard to get around.
Yeah, anyway, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to add one comment with that. I think, I think the temporary event, it was used for years, and I think they're adding more events, so then it kind of really morphed into a ongoing, regular event. And I think that's where the issue came in, so.
I think that lazy bum hair scrambles once a year only.
Yeah, it was once a year.
Yeah, but then they were going to, they were, they were adding more, correct?
Wasn't specifically my project, but yeah, the understanding was that they were actually going to be coming more frequently, having regular events. And then I, it grew. That was my, my also understanding is, you know, how many people were showing up and different things. And basically, more people, more impact, and more we have to evaluate and consider.
Yeah, and I don't mean to just be singling that one out. I just, anyway, we'll talk separately, you know.
Because we're going to have this come back. My honest recommendation is, yeah, that maybe we have this as a, I would say, a more thorough discussion, understanding the planning process. I know, like Supervisor Cosmic, to his point, you know, there's, there's certain triggers with entitlements and like final maps where you can't reverse course, and we're officially on the hook, so maybe having a little bit of an education process. But I do agree with Supervisor Tiffany that this could be an opportunity also for us to make sure that we are capitalizing on what we do have, and that's a lot of open space in a manageable way, right? Where maybe there's a tourism revenue as an opportunity. So those are my thoughts. If we can, if there's no other further comments, we can go on to item number seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so TUT tax. I'll defer to our CAO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes.
Oh, public comment. I, no, wait, wait, no, we did do public comment. Yeah, we'll do public comment after the presentation.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Supervisor Gonzalez threw a curveball at me. Go ahead, yeah. Thank you.
All right, I'll pass this to Dulce Alonso. This item, actually, we did, we had a discussion with your board sometime back, and your board wanted to have a better understanding of what the budget would look like prior to moving forward. We're against the clock, so we wanted to have that discussion with you. And Dulce Alonso, our management analyst, is here to present this item. Dulce?
Thank you, Board. And if I, if you could share my presentation. But you've heard from this item and from me before, so I will make it brief and get through the talking points. So California allows a sales levy on retail and tangible items. Here's, here's a range of what local jurisdictions currently charge the county. Sales tax is 8.25. City of San Juan Batista is 9% and the city of Hollister is 9.25. So some research on, on their increase, the city of Hollister passed with 78% support on November 8th of 2016, a 20-year sales tax for, for 1%. And it, so voters had the option to either vote yes or no. If it wouldn't have passed, their, their 1% would have expired on March 31st. So their current sales, the 1% is valid for 20 years. Additionally, in San Juan Batista in 2004, implemented a 0.75 sales tax increase. And then another nearby jurisdiction, and the city of Watsonville in March of 2020, passed a public and safety tax with 78.6% support of voters. And what was interesting, Watsonville has a, it's continuous until repealed by the voters. So I just wanted to share a few of the term limits. So potential sales tax within the unincorporated area is 1%. San Juan Batista has 0.25 and Hollister has zero, meeting the statutory minimum requirement. So we can go up to 9.25% if the board so chooses to. I just want to highlight that the last deadline on here, which is August 16th, I'm sorry, August 12th, would be if the board so chooses to move forward with, with the tax measure. That's essentially our deadline to get it to the elections department to get on the November ballot. So a few projections of, of a potential tax. So currently, through Bradley Burns, the county receives approximately 1%. So from January through December of 2021, the county received 3.25 mil. And if we were to increase by 1% to the new proposed rate of 9.25, it's projected we would receive 3.3 million. Just real quickly, and I, I know you guys have heard this from me before, but the difference between a general tax and a special tax. A general tax requires majority vote, which is 50% plus one vote. Whereas a special tax, which is a tax for a specific purpose, requires two-thirds of the voter. So we would need at least 66.67% or a super majority. One of the options, if we choose to move forward, is if the board wants to move forward with an advisory vote on the ballot. And what an advisory vote on the ballot would be a non bind, bind, bind merry advisory question to gauge the opinion of, of the voter. So we could frame a question as a general tax that wouldn't, wouldn't tie the board to use it in, in that way, but it, but it would ask for public opinion if the board so chooses to move forward. So, so here's a few jurisdictions that, that did advisory votes on the ballot. So it includes Ucaya, Looms, and then Sloan County. And, and, and in the packet, it includes the questions that they actually placed on the ballot. I, I won't go through and read each one, but they are on the packet and they're there for you. So what we're looking for today is if, if the board so chooses to provide direction to staff to place a resolution on placing a countywide TUT measure for November 22. If, if the board does choose to move in that directions, there's, there's five areas that we, we want clarity on, and they're listed before you. So what we're looking for clarity on is should it be a countywide tax or just in the unincorporated area? Should it be a general tax or special tax? Whether we should seek the 1% tax rate, duration of the tax, and then if, if the board would like to explore an advisory vote on the ballot.
And the term, right? The term is the only other length of time?
Yes. And that is all I have for you.
Okay, so can we go to public comment first?
If you'd like to make a comment in chambers, please provide a speaker card. On Zoom, press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon. Elia Salinas?
Thank you, good afternoon. So this has been in discussions for a couple of months now, and I've, I've been speaking out against this, any increases in taxes and not just this. If you go, if you, if I go into the city, the way I understand it, if you go countywide, it'll become 10% in the city, but it'll become 9% in the county? So if they're already at 9%, it wouldn't increase within the city? Okay. Because right now, when I go buy my car out of the county, I pay the tax in San Benio County's tax. I don't get charged a Monterey County tax.
Right, when you buy a, when you buy a car, it's where, where you reside.
Reside.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Full disclaimer, Tiffany Ford.
Anyway, so I mentioned earlier, you know, we're, we're tired of getting taxed, and there's also going to be, the high school wants to bring in, you know, they want to come with a bond, some type of a bond or a measure for a new high school, $123 million. You want to get San Houston taken care of, but we don't want the, you know, I certainly don't want the public, the taxpayers to have to pay for something like that. And it's just, it's the last measure that the high school tried did not go forward. And I just don't think that another measure for to increase taxes in San Benio County is going to, is going to pass. Do you need to do a survey? What is the most economical way to do a survey? Do you have to go to some kind of an advisory measure? I mean, if you're already going to go to a measure to find out what, how the people feel out there, then you might as well be, do a measure. Is the cost the same to do an advisory measure as it is to do a regular measure? Or is there a way to actually do a poll, which would be more economical to the county, to find out how the public feels about doing a 1% increase? Because the people that I've, I've speak with, they're not, they're not for this, but maybe, you know, we're a small minority and there's a majority out there that wants to pay more taxes. Thank you.
No other comments.
Okay, bringing it back to the board. Who wants to go first? Supervisor Gonzalez?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and start. When the county first started talking about the 1% tax increase for the county, we were looking at all the possibilities for revenue increase to kind of assist the county with its budget shortfall. But that was when we were all sworn in in 2021, and it was part of the economic development to see what we can do. And initially, I was all for it because we were looking at ways to make the county to enhance it so that we can provide services. But that was right before the pandemic. That was right before all of the supply chain holdups. Everything has skyrocketed since then. The cost of gas, while we're paying almost 650 a gallon for gas, which is ridiculous. The cost for food, go to the grocery store. We have people in our community right now that are really struggling. Are they going to pay rent? Are they going to buy food? I mean, I, I don't know if you all know the individuals and your constituents that you represent, but my constituency can barely make ends meet. And for the county to impose a 1% tax in the grand scheme of things, it doesn't look like a lot where we're setting from in terms of supervisors. But when you're struggling to make ends meet, it's significant. And so where I was supportive of this previously, I can in all good, good conscience, support it now. If we looked at it at a possibly another time when, when the economy was better, or even looking at the possible, possibility of a recession hitting, and that's just going to compound the residents of this community and just make things worse. And so I personally, in, in good conscience, can't support this at this time. Sorry.
Thank you. Supervisor Tiffany?
Yeah, this, this is a tough one. And as Supervisor Gonzalez said, you know, when we first, this initially came out, Supervisor Cosmic and I were both on an ad hoc where we were looking at ways of bringing more revenue to the county, and this was one of the things that, that we looked at, and we've been kicking this around for a while. Just to emphasize, we would not be enacting this. It would be the voters that would be deciding if we put it on the ballot. And, and I'm still, although I hear what Supervisor Gonzalez is saying, I'm still inclined to put it on the ballot, although I suspect there may not be support for that here today, which I totally understand. Obviously, we're in a different economic time. Inflation is skyrocketing, et cetera. I just, I, and let me also add, I wouldn't be in favor of an advisory vote. I don't see the point. You either put it on or you don't. I mean, if you get an advisory vote, then you've got to take the next step. So to me, that doesn't make any sense.
So, so an advisory vote would be to advise on how to use the funds, but it would.
So you, so you still, if they vote yes, it's only how you're going to use the funds?
How would you use a fund?
Okay. But anyway, where I'm going to go with this is, you know, and I, I'm kind of, to be honest with you, I'm on the fence on this. And, and like I, like I said, I suspect that, I think we need a four-fist vote, and I don't, I doubt we'll get it. I just want the community to understand, and I'm kind of get, you know, I'm on my soapbox every time I get the chance. But the reason why this is here for us to consider is to bring in more revenue. And we, we badly need more revenue. So if, 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 if we feel that, you know, our constituents aren't in support of, of, you know, having a tax, a 1%, which I can understand, then, then I would hope that our constituents understand we need to get revenue from somewhere else. And somewhere else is going to be from things like economic development, commercial development, sales tax that they're paying instead of our constituents. That's what we need in our county, and yet we have this initiative. We have two initiatives. We have one initiative that's going to prevent, almost prevent that from happening. And then we have another initiative that's going to stop potentially strata verita, which could bring in huge amounts of dollars. So I just hope the, and again, it gets back to education. I hope the, the public understands, you know, the reason why we were looking at the 1% in the first place was to get more revenue. But if we're not going to do that, which I'm okay with, then I hope that they will be understanding and, and vote down this initiative so we can get revenue from other sources. Anyway, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Supervisor Dirks?
Yeah, at this time, this is, I, I concur with Supervisor Gonzalez. I mean, we, gas is approaching $7 a gallon. Inflation is the highest it's been in 40 years. In good conscience, I can't impose this tax, even though it would be the people voting on it. I still feel like it's just, it's not reading the room in the current conditions that we're in right now. And I, I feel like it's an unwise use of our money at this point in time, and because it still costs money to put it on the ballot. And I'd rather put that towards something else at this point in time because I, I feel strongly that it wouldn't pass. And so I feel like it's, yes, and to what Supervisor Tiffany just said, people need to know. They need to know the, the impacts of, of what we're, what's coming before them. And, and I do feel it's our responsibility to make sure people are educated and so that we can make decisions, you know, that will have more of an impact on our economic, you know, stability within the county rather than, you know, saying, I, I feel like the tax would just be a Band-Aid to a larger issue. And so I really do feel that this is not something I can support at this time for District One residents or county residents in general.
Supervisor Cosmic?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just for context here, when this came up, times were obviously much, much different. Gas was probably $3 and something. We weren't in historic inflationary times as Supervisor, as everyone has said, started with Supervisor Gonzalez, and I, you can't argue against it. I mean, it's, it's, everybody. I mean, it's, everybody's struggling more now than they were a year ago, and I think this probably came up about a year ago. And so, you know, so, but we still were looking at it, you know, this inflation thing is pretty recent. It's only the last couple of months, I guess, that we've, it's really been this bad. And so staff, I appreciate, has been working on this. The last thing we wanted to do was give you a bunch of work and then bring it to the board and deny it, but it's obviously headed that way. I will just say, you know, there was some logic to this, in my view, you know, I pointed this out previously, the city of Hollister is at 8.2, or 9.25%. We're at 8.25, San Juan's at 9. Most other jurisdictions are higher than us, and yet here we are in the county in San Benito, and we rely on this very small snippet of property tax revenue primarily to get by. So there, to me, and I'm not a big, necessarily a big raise taxes kind of, kind of person, but in this case, it felt like there was some logic to it. And then what Supervisor Tiffany said, we wanted to just let the voters decide. I think that goes without saying, that's, we know that, but it's, you know, but that is the reality. And, but, you know, frankly, this should have been, in hindsight, we weren't on the board at the time, this should have been on the ballot eight years ago, or whenever that was, the city of Hollister put theirs on the ballot, and there, I believe there were discussions about doing it at the county level, and they just didn't have the political will to get it done. So now here we are, it's probably the worst possible timing. We couldn't have worse timing than this. I mean, we, nobody knows where this economy is going. I talked during the prior budget sessions about, we really got to be frugal with our money. We got to be careful with how we spend on staffing, and that's the same way that families across our community are viewing life right now. You got to be very careful with how you're spending money. That's why demand has gone down so much in some areas. You know, the gas prices, it's just, you know, I feel like I'm at the, I feel like I'm putting $60, $70 into my gas tank every week or two, and, and it hurts. So, but we do have lacking revenue sources, and, and so this was just, this was an idea to, you know, that would provide a decent amount of revenue. If some of these projects do go forward, it would have provided a significant amount of additional revenue potentially for the county where we could really do a lot of things for the residents. Remember, we had IHSS workers, we've had them in our chambers, give them credit, they've been here, I think, almost every meeting for the last, like, six months. Because the state of California, frankly, is not stepping up and doing what's right and funding the healthcare for those IHSS workers. They're handing down this unfunded mandate, frankly, and now I'm getting on a soapbox. And I see Chair Hernandez is probably going to stop me. But we got SNIP, we got all these things, we have public safety, we have staff asking for 20-something positions, $2.3 million that we can't afford. So something's got to give at some point. And so I get it on, this is poor timing. I talked to, I call it my phone-a-friend for the Brown Act stuff, Supervisor Tiffany, I'm being dated now here, what was the game show where the phone-a-friend? Someone wants to be a millionaire? But Supervisor Tiffany and I had a good conversation yesterday about just, boy, this is, you know, this is the worst possible timing for this. And so I get it. I will ask, though, you know, it'll be a different board, but we might want to consider if things do change in the next year, if the economy hopefully improves significantly, perhaps we can bring this back for 2024, and maybe we didn't waste too much staff time. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Cosmiki. I conceded, I would say I'll concede a little bit of my time to you, yeah. I did with all that was said, so if I can get a motion?
I'll go ahead. I'll make a motion that we don't go forward with this, putting this on the ballot.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So on to consent. Just for the public's education, these are matters that shall be considered as a whole without discussion unless a particular item is removed from the consent agenda. Approval of consent items means approval of the recommended action as specified on the agenda, item transmittal.
Go to public comment first.
Yeah, I was going to say, before we get a motion, let's go to public comment.
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen.
Huh?
No comments.
She left.
Does any board member want to pull an item?
No.
Thirty-two, please.
Supervisor Dirks?
No, I'm good.
I would not like to pull one either, so can I get a motion for all those items except for thirty-two, please?
I'll make that motion to we approve all of the consent items, number eight through, let me get to the last page, eight through forty, with the exception of item number thirty-two.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Forty, excuse me, I think there's a correction on the last number, I think it's forty-two.
Forty-two? Okay, I'm sorry, yes, forty-two.
Did you say thirty-two or forty-two?
Forty-two.
Forty-two.
Same, forty-two. Different. Okay, and I'll second that.
So just for clarification, we're talking about item forty-two?
No, she, Supervisor Gonzalez...
All of them, eight through forty-two, with the exception of thirty-two.
Got it, okay. So thirty-two is the item that has not been considered.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four, or five-zero. Item thirty-two, Supervisor Cosmiki?
Yeah, I don't really have much to say. I have this, you know, a lot of the same issues that I've had previously with this, so I really don't have anything beyond that.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve item thirty-two? Public comment. Yeah, we already had, did...
You already had public comment. You can go ahead and go with the...
So yeah, can I get a motion for thirty-two, please?
I'll move that we approve the final map for the subdivision for twelve dash eighty-five, tract three oh eight, commonly known as Santana Ranch, unit fifteen, located on east of Fairview Road.
Second. I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Four-one. It was actually a record-breaking day, I think.
We still have one more item to do.
Almost record-breaking.
Almost. If you can keep it down to a few minutes.
That's what I meant. Public hearing.
Room for improvement.
Yeah. Public hearing, item, sorry, forty-three.
Tom Slavich? Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'll make, try to make this quick so you get, get out here in record time. So we have two Williamson Act applications. The first application is Bumgarner's, and this lot line adjustment is for their ranch. It's 3,479 acres. The contract number is seventeen sixteen. It's a cattle ranch. It's located about 45 miles south of Hollister on Kalinga Road. And so what they want to do is they want to do a land swap. They want a lot line to just 40 acres of their land that's in the Williamson Act with 40 acres of their land that's not in the Williamson Act. So the, the non-contracted land is by far better in agricultural use than the other 40 acres that's in the Williamson Act. Now, the request meets the criteria of our lot line adjustment, and in this situation, the exchange is for better ag land, and it would not increase the acreage in the contract. And your committee recommended approval of this lot line adjustment. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, is there any known intention with the other forty? Are the...
I believe on the other forty, they might want to put a house on it.
A house?
A house.
Okay. Okay, that's it.
Public comment?
Open up the public hearing.
Yeah, if we can, if we can open up the public hearing, is there any public comment? Madam Clerk?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, please press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon on your screen. No comment.
Bringing it back to the board. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve this request.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we're just last down to the future agenda items.
Well, we've got one more item. We've got one more item.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is number two. This is a lot line adjustment, combination eminent domain.
Eminent domain.
And this is a Lee Family Trust. This is a 298-acre cattle ranch, contract number seventy-six eleven. It's located about 32 miles south of Hollister off Highway 25. It's one mile south of the Pinnacles National Park. It's where the road kind of curves and it has that red flashing light. And so in this situation, Caltrans wants to go ahead and take 1.43 acres of land to straighten out the highway there. And the 1.43 acres of land is on the outer boundaries of the ranch, so it's not going to really affect the ag productivity of that particular ranch. And the land actually that's going to be taken would come out of the Williamson Act and come out of the contract. So in this situation, your committee recommended approval of this application. Any questions?
Public comment for this item?
If you'd like to make a comment on Zoom, press star nine on your phone or the raise your hand icon. No comments.
Okay, if there's no other comment from the board, if I can get a motion, please?
Move to approve, as recommended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to future agenda items.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we have a request to correct the record in terms of the, the amount involved in the settlement, the stipulated judgment that was previously authorized for the chair to sign.
Is that for the closed session item?
Yes. And that was in the case involving heirs of Ladd. The total amount under the stipulation is $3,300, not $2,500. Just like to make this correction on the record.
I appreciate it, Joel. If we can make that correction. Madam Clerk, thank you. Future agenda items?
Well, I mean, but I think we, I would recommend going back to another vote since it's a different number, just for the record.
For that closed session.
Because it's a more greater number, so I would recommend Mr. Chair to go back to it.
So we would get an amended motion?
Yeah, that's what I would recommend.
So can I get a motion to approve $3,300, the amended correction?
I move that we approve the settled amount for 3,300 for the land, the heirs of Ladd.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Five-zero?
Thanks.
So now we're on to future agenda items. And there was two items, actually, that were mentioned. I don't know if Supervisor Cosmiki wanted to make that request for the drought proclamation. I know you had mentioned it, Supervisor Dirks.
Oh, actually, I did, but...
Oh, it was being, it was Supervisor Gonzalez, I'm sorry.
Yes, and I would like to have that, if I can get a second on that.
Second.
Is there any specificity to the language that you guys would like to see?
Just public education and how important it is, and we're in a drought, and just loud and clear.
Drink beer, not water.
Or wine.
Could there be maybe another item, considering the PIO element, right? Because that would be parted, I would imagine? Or is that a little ways out?
So just briefly, we went through the first round of interviews. I'll be doing another interview, I'll be doing the second interview, second dairy interviews next week.
Okay.
One more week, yeah.
Either way.
So we'll shit, we'll have, hopefully, we'll have a PIO set.
To back it up, yeah. So drought proclamation, so we got a second, can I? All those in favor?
We don't need to vote on it, just as long as we have to disapprove, you know?
Yeah, okay. So, and then the other item I saw was, yeah, Colin and Betsy were talking about the educational element with, what was it? The planning commission.
Yeah, I can make that recommendation. Obviously, there's been, you know, communication about...
Could we, would it be too soon to do it in our next, at the meeting when we're dealing with the zoning? I guess, or is that Ariel, I'm just wondering, education stuff on the...
Just to go a little more in depth. On the planning commission discussion, just their level of authority and...
Could that, could that be done prior to the, when we visit the zoning change at our next meeting, or is that too soon?
The 28th.
Yeah, so I was just discussing with the consultant that we can, you know, add on the, you know, explanation of, you know, what the planning commission, you know, duties are, what, what authorities they have. So we were just going to include it as part of the presentation. I actually was about to start sending you guys emails to see if you wanted to meet with staff and staff's consultant prior to next meeting so we can, you know, do some one-on-one and include, you know, include further on our presentation.
So that works for me. She's just saying they could include it.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we can, we can basically go through what the authorities are of planning commission, and then, you know...
But you're saying individually instead of on the 28th, or you're saying in, on the 28th?
There was a, from, from what I received from a few of the supervisors, there's a few things that you would maybe want to have a meeting on, you know, prior to have further discussion on that we can include into the presentation, so I was going to send that out.
So just to give clarity, it's educational.
Yes.
I would, I would just, it's educating, it's planning commission authority, what their authority is, and there's many facets of the authority. So I believe that's what the, what the planning department is going to present in the 28th presentation.
It's laid out in the zoning code, so it's part of the umbrella.
It's laid out in the zoning code, and then it's also, there's actually a separate section that kind of goes over basically the planning commission authority. So we were just going to, you know, provide you that information in a few slides.
And I, excuse me, I'd like, just simple, some basic things, too, about, you know, conditional use permits versus, you know, some of the, just a handful of the other things that, you know, that's part of the discussion with planning commission, I think, as well.
Tentative maps.
You know, when, when do things get appealed to us versus, you know, those kinds of things?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Well, we can go into detail on that.
Okay. Perfect. Awesome. Any other requests?
Mr. Chair, if I may, the planning commission has a section in the portion of the county code that deals with commissions and committees of the board. It also is addressed in the subdivision section of the code, so it's multiple sections of the code, not just in the zoning code, that the planning commission's authority is addressed. And so we'd be prepared to present a comprehensive presentation on how is, what is the authority of the planning commission across all of those sections of the code.
I think that'd be helpful. Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I was just going to mention that, maybe I hadn't noticed before, but the list of items...
I was going to say that right now.
I thought that was very helpful.
Yeah. So I don't know if you noticed, if all the board members noticed, but there was a hyperlink under future agenda items that actually has that list that I promised I would put on at the April, at the, was it the June eighth meeting with Babs? So we added that in. What I think what we'll do, since we're not going to have future agenda items in the future, I'll add it to either the department head announcements or the, or the Board of Supervisor announcements, there's a hyperlink there. So you'll see where, you know, what we have as an ongoing list. And also, and to be, to add to that, we had multiple, there was actually other tabs that we didn't attach to it, but there's, you know, some of their accomplishments and some of the other things we've done. But I think this was just a good snapshot of what we have on the table right now.
Okay. Thank you. So any other requests? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero. Thank you very much, everybody.
All right. Huh? Yeah, I'll take the whole thing. All right. I thought that wouldn't be too bad today.